Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim LaHugh is with the Mayors Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pete White. He'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning thanking you for such a beautiful day for us to be able to gather together to conduct city business. And I thank you for this leadership that you've placed in our city. I thank you for this great city and our people, our communities. God, we just thank you for where we are able to be and to live. But God, most of all, we praise you for who you are. We thank you that you're our Lord and Savior. God, I pray that we would honor you and bless you. And God, we just pray for your blessings on today's business. We love you, and it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. October is Disability Awareness Month, and we have several members of the Mayor's Committee on Disability Awareness. If you all would come forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it, and we'll get settled.
Whereas each year in the United States, the month of October is designated as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas 2013 is the 23rd anniversary of the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, the landmark legislation that set the standard as the most comprehensive civil rights law for people with disabilities. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City continues its ADA transition plan and MAPS III projects to make facilities and transit more accessible to people with disabilities. And the city's ADA coordinator and staff work daily to ensure that city programs and facilities are accessible to all. Whereas Oklahoma City needs the knowledge, skill, talent, and productivity of our citizens with disabilities to help energize our economy. And Oklahoma City's people with disabilities deserve the opportunity to work and have full lives. Whereas this year's theme for the Mayor's Committee on Disability's concern is "Rumble Says Safe Street Scene for 2013." And whereas on October 29th, the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns is providing a special seminar on ADA accessibility in Oklahoma City and is also holding its 23rd Annual Awards Luncheon to honor outstanding people with disabilities and persons and entities that support their well-being. And area student artists have created posters raising awareness of progress for people with disabilities. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Disability Awareness Month and Tuesday, October 29th, as Special Disability Awareness Day in Oklahoma City. And he urges observance by all citizens as a reminder that people with disabilities can learn, work, pay taxes, buy goods and services, and be self-supporting if given the opportunity.
Let's show our appreciation to these citizens who serve us on disability issues.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor of the Year, Cornet. We appreciate this so much. We come here every year, and everyone with disabilities and all of our supporters and all of the members of the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns wants to thank everyone in Oklahoma City who goes out of their way to help people with disabilities have a good life. And we dedicated sidewalks in August. And these will be such a benefit to help people get to the buses, which are all accessible, and people can get to work, and that's what people want to do. Thank you.
And Pam Henry is stepping down as chair of our committee. She's going to stay on the committee, but she's going to hand off the baton to someone else to be...
Sidney.
Sidney will be taking over. But that'll be down the line. We still got, what, another month or so of your leadership?
Till January.
Till January, so two more months. But let's show our appreciation to Pam and her service and the rest of the committee. Thank you all. Thank you for what you wanted to do. Thank you. Thanks very much. October is also Fire Prevention Month, and we have several members of our fire department here. You guys want to come forward? I'll ask the clerk to read our proclamation.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to more than 81,000 calls for emergency assistance in 2012. And whereas during the same year, fire killed 11 of our citizens, injured 40 others, and caused approximately $26 million in property loss. Whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by fire firsthand, not only for those citizens who have lost loved ones or their homes and belongings to fire, but for their coworkers injured or killed in the line of duty. Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department is actively engaged in year-round public education programs to raise awareness of fire safety, to help prevent the frequency and severity of fires in our city. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City. And he encourages all citizens to learn about fire prevention and fire safety and apply these practices at home, at work, and around our community.
Let's show our appreciation to our fire department. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, as you made the remark while Francis was reading the resolution, that the number of fatalities that we had this previous year seemed high. And it is high, and obviously, any are unacceptable for us. And but the common denominator in almost all of those fatalities was lack of a working smoke alarm. And there's just no reason that that should happen because of our Project Life Smoke Alarm Program that has been ongoing now for several years, where we provide smoke alarms for all city residents at no cost, and we'll even come out and install those. So that's just one part of our public education program and our fire prevention program that continues on. As a matter of fact, Energizer Company will be partnering with us this year. They've sponsored the Change Your Clock/Change Your Battery Program now for 25 years. And so they selected Oklahoma City to come in, and we're going to do some work with them in the month of October as well. So we're looking forward to that. But a lot of good public education programs on, and we continue to work hard. I have Captain Mark Corbin with me and Captain Jerry Corhanke, and they're part of our Public Education Work Section. And again, it's a small staff, but they do a fine job of trying to get our message out there to all the citizens. And so that's what we really try and concentrate on. So we appreciate the support that we continue to get from you in the council. Thank you.
We appreciate your work, too. And just a reminder to all our citizens about changing the batteries in those smoke alarms. We had 11 citizens die in fatalities of fire-related this past year, and that's just way too many. And as the chief said, a lot of times, it's just a smoke alarm that's not working. So if you know about someone or care about someone who doesn't have a smoke alarm, make sure they get one. If there's a financial issue involved, make sure you call the fire department. They'll come out and put one in. But everybody needs to change their battery during the month of October. We appreciate you, and this applause is to show our appreciation. Thank you. Called a meeting to order. Item three is the office of the mayor. It's a series of appointments, so entertain a motion. Comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. We have two items. One is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 10th and 17th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 27th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, this morning, we've got several starting on the consent docket under item 6L on page nine. 6L on page nine, that's a Merle loan document, and we'd ask that that be stricken. We will bring that back. There were some errors in the documents. We'll strike that and bring that back. Page nine, item 6L. Moving to page 19, under the concurrent docket, item 7J needs to be stricken, and that will be reworked and brought back on October 1st. So that's, again, item 7J being stricken. And then on page 24, under item 8L1, item A, 814 North Douglas, we asked that that be stricken. We need to renotify. Item D, 4300 South Oklahoma, we asked that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 2324 Southwest 39th Street, we asked that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item O, 721 Northwest 54th Street, we asked that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? I'll assess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have a motion and a second on the MFA. Any comments or questions here?
Mayor, I did just have one quick question, I guess, of the manager. We've got a series of professional legal service agreements where we have separate counsel representing each individual. And I've seen them in the past where we've used outside counsel to represent all of the employees. Is this different for any reason?
We, there, sometimes the employees who have a right to choose outside counsel, choose separate counsel on it. It happens occasionally, not often.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Pat?
Your Honor, just a quick question. It seems like we've had, in this particular agenda, was an extraordinary number of accidents we were recovering from, workman's comp's claims.
Yes.
And I was wondering if there's any particular reason why we ran into so many so...
Well, one is every other week, council meetings, and so we've got a little larger group this time. I think it's just some timing on some of them, Mr. Ruckus. We're not seeing a significant increase in trend today of injuries.
There was no reason to question our safety program. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the MFA before we vote?
Is MFA A being stricken? It's the, you struck the concurrent 7J.
Then I guess we must strike this one. Thank you.
All right, so item A on the MFA is struck, and we'll take the motion and second on the rest of the MFA items. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourned the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Okay, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Well, adjourned the OC PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. You have a second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourned the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a couple of quick questions on items L and A, D, Alpha Dog.
And Mayor, if I could, I had a quick question on 6K and then 6M and 6AU.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a comment as relates to 6K.
All right, Pat, you want to get started with item L?
Merle loan project...
This has been struck, by the way.
Oh, it has? Okay. Then forget it. But on A, A, D, we have a grant application to the Oklahoma Military Strategic Planning Commission. I asked the city manager about that yesterday, but I thought the others might be interested in hearing what that is because it sounded sort of awesome.
It's a state fund that for, used to assist, have cities assist to the local military installations. And as we were in negotiations with the state for the right-of-way along Kelly Avenue north of 63rd Street for that street widening project up there, along the armory up there, they asked for some remediation that could be found through this, or basically a conduit for it. We're making the application to the state to get funds to help out the state armory. And we'll do those improvements in conjunction with the roadway improvements we're going to do out there. It's really some fence improvements and some roadway access improvements into the, into the armory.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Meg, item K.
Thank you, Mayor. Item K is a resolution that would allow us to submit a request to the Economic Development Administration to substitute a grantee in a small business loan. And I just didn't exactly understand the memorandum. Russell, I wondered if you could help clarify a little bit for me.
This is a loan fund that was provided to us by the Economic Development Administration probably about a decade ago, and we have been administering that through Oklahoma City Northeast. Oklahoma City Northeast has now volunteered to take on all of the functions associated with the management and the reporting on the loan. So that's essentially what it is.
So this would transfer the grantee from the city of Oklahoma City to...
Correct. Oklahoma City Northeast.
Okay. And just in terms of the numbers, it said we were granted a half a million dollars. We've made a couple of loans, we've received some payments, and we now have $427,000 available to relend, which appear that it's been a very successful program, or we haven't been able to put the money to use.
Well, yeah, there's too much that we're holding in reserve right now. So we hope that when it's with them completely, that they'll be able to be more aggressive about getting those loans out because they do need, that money does need to be loaned out. The difficulty is all of the caveats attached to the loan program. That's been the major holdup.
Okey-dokey.
But they have volunteered to do it, so...
Wonderful, I'm glad to hear it. Great. Item 6M, I just wanted to make note of, are the final plans and specifications to be advertised for bids for the new police headquarters building. So very excited to have this one.
You're not as excited as Chief City is.
I know, I didn't see Chief here in the audience, but I know he is excited to get that project underway. It's going to be a wonderful addition to near west downtown Oklahoma City, and we're very excited to have this underway. And item 6AU is an exception, accepting a donation of some OG&E stock. And in reading the memorandum, it looks like a donation, generous donation, was made to the city a number of years ago in the amount of $1,000. And Pat, it made me think of our tenure on the Science Museum Board when people would donate things like 5,000 Santa Clauses. Do we actually have a policy in place that tells us what we can and cannot accept as a donation to the city?
No, especially on cash and our stock options. Councilman Griner asked about this last night, about this. This is a little bit unique, but Craig Freeman advises me that we have an account set up, so it's just a matter of getting it into the account, and it will not cause any additional administrative cost for us.
And I'm not suggesting it in any stretch of the imagination. It's not very generous, I just...
But the gentleman who donated it was related to the people that originally set up the fund. So he felt it, he had a personal tie to the original donation fund and wanted to have a gift that would go back to that.
I just think going forward, it might not be a bad idea to look at, you know, possibly some best practices of other nonprofits and things to see about donation policies because there are some cases where it might be something that would be difficult for the city to manage or maintain, or it could involve expense or...
And we appreciate all donations, but sometimes they are so small that the administration of those, of those donations are more than what the donation is.
As good an investment as OG&E stock is, I suggest that we sell this as quickly as we can.
That's not...
Because I think it's important that we don't carry stock on our donation books because they go up and down. This stock is going to go up, I know, but I still think we ought to have a general policy that when we get stock donations, we sell it as quickly as we can.
And John, you wanted to also talk about the item. Meg was talking to Russell about item K.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Northeast Organization has been a part of Northeast Oklahoma City for a long time. And so I just want to thank Northeast Incorporated for everything that you do for our city. And this is also, item K is also a great opportunity to push economic development in Northeast Oklahoma City, but also across Oklahoma City. If I could have the board members and staff of Northeast Oklahoma City to please stand up. Thank you for everything that you do for our city.
And with that, I think we're ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to the concurrents docket.
Move the items subject to individual considerations, Your Honor?
All right, are there any individual considerations on the concurrents docket? Looks like we're ready to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. This moves us on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Five at 8731 South McKinley Avenue. It's currently our one single family and has become a new simplified planned unit development. And David, we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Johnson, are you, could you make a presentation for this, and then we'll listen to anybody else who's signed up to say something about it?
Good morning. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the applicant. Just a little background on this case. The existing PUD 1414, which is west of this site, was developed a few years ago as a personal storage venue. This property became available that we're rezoning into the spud, and the owner of the personal storage acquired it. It's an abandoned house that abuts her property on some critical points. And so the SPUD was developed to continue the personal storage use out towards McKinley. There was a series of meetings with the neighbors, probably six different meetings over a period of time. The most impacted neighbors are the neighbor to the north, Mr. Jackson, who's here today, and the neighbors to the south, the Kellys, who are not here today because their property lines abut the north and south line of this SPUD. A lot of the concern from the neighbors that we spoke with initially were concerned about the operations of the existing personal storage. And so we took it upon ourselves to take the original PUD, which we did not prepare, and walk through that site with the city inspectors to make sure that she was in compliance with the PUD. There were a couple minor issues that needed to be addressed, and we've, she has addressed those, mostly dealing with lighting being directed away from the outside edge. There was questions from the neighbors about drainage. We evaluated the drainage plan that the city had approved. We inspected the detention ponds that were built, again, not under our guidance, but they all meet the city's criteria. So there wasn't a lot that could be done with regard to drainage complaints. It's just a very low area. It's been that way for years. They built this particular site up to allow water to run off in three directions, in fact. So that's a little bit of background. This particular SPUD is very specific in use in that it's going to be outdoor storage for the personal storage project, which is off to the west. It's basically just a paved lot, hard surface, a lot of trees on the abutting north and south property lines. As you can see, we were very specific in the SPUD with regard to type of trees, height of trees when they get planted, the fact that they are mandatory irrigated trees. The fence is also eight feet high with a specific design, steel post, again, trying to make sure that once this is built, that the neighbors won't have to be calling Action Center to complain. So we do have one exit onto McKinley. It's an exit only. There will not be any ingress at that point, and that's primarily to allow for good circulation through the site. The entrance into the personal storage is behind a retail center that fronts onto 89th Street. So we put height limitations. It's a 12-foot high limitation in the parking area so that there's no big tall trailers in there, semis or anything like that, to be allowed. So it's a, it's a very simple, specific use. That's all that can be done there. And like I said, we met with the neighbors several times. The last conversation I had was with the Kellys immediately south of here, and we did tweak the language a little bit to make sure that the parking lot to the west or behind their house also had the height restriction in it. And we've added that into the document. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Francis, could we hear the individuals that, oh, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Tara Elder Lyons has signed up to speak on this issue.
Hi.
Good morning.
My name is Tara Elder Lyons.
Tara, can we get your address for the record, please?
8709 South McKinley.
Okay, thank you.
I'm one house on right north of Mr. Jackson.
Okay.
The guy that's most affected. I've lived there for, my parents bought the property 56 years ago, and I've lived there. I'm the oldest probably person, the longest person living there because everybody else is dead. And Mr. Jackson moved there in 19, he bought the property in 1970 and moved there in '72. So I've lived on that two and a half acres most of my life. I knew Mr. Bennett, the man that originally owned the property. I knew Mr. Grace, the guy that sold all the property. McKinley Street from 89th to 84th has always been like a paradise retreat. We had, it's been so quiet and wonderful and friendly, neighbors never bothering anybody except during an emergency. I've been acquainted with Monica Brown, the owner that's trying to do this, for approximately 25 years. We went to church together. She purchased the old Bennett Place, I believe my husband said, a year ago. I lose track of time. There's been a battle ever since because this summer, the grass has been up to this high on our, and most of the, all the people there keep their lawns. I mean, it's a nice neighborhood. It's not, it's not Rivendell where Monica lives, but it is nice. And she hasn't, she's had some major safety issues going on, if that's any indication of what she's going to do when she gets her, if she wants to do this. She's got all that commercial property in the back, the storage units. I don't understand how much money is enough money. I admire her vision. I admire her motivation. She has a thriving storage unit. I think, I don't know how much happiness she could derive from money, and it would bring great distress to the neighborhood because I know, we, my husband and I travel quite a bit. I know of no area in Oklahoma City that has a commercial property in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I, in America, I haven't really seen that. In a nice, I mean, any part of Oklahoma City, I haven't seen that. I know that Monica would object to having this thing, this in her, in Rivendell. And I just think it would be a downfall to the neighborhood. We would love to keep our little neighborhood intact. I object very adamantly. There was two attempts to put commercial property. It's two and a half acre blocks everywhere, and there was two attempts. One was a tour bus company, one was a, they were paving company. And both of those were next by changing commercial. And I appreciate your time, and I just would say adamantly, I believe the neighbor, oh, I know, there's 30 neighbors I know that are adamantly against this, and the church doesn't want it. They aren't able to vote, and the dentist, and then there's a nice neighborhood down at the end.
Tara, where do you live on the map that I'm looking at?
One, where the area is, and then Mr. Jackson is the house up front, and then ours is right there in the next.
You're like 87th Street?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay.
It's, okay, down, down into the property. Mr. Bennett's was that old house right, right down a little bit. It's, no, that house in the back. He's way to the back. That's Mr. Bennett's. Mr. Jackson is, oh, wait, I'm going the wrong way. Doyle's is, uh...
North?
Just north of the...
Just north of the area that's outlined there?
Uh-huh, right. There, whoa, whoa, back down. That's Doyle, and then ours is right there.
Okay, thank you.
That's us. We're just two of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Floyd Doyle Jackson?
Yes, my name is Floyd Doyle Jackson. I live at eighty-seven seventeen South McKinley Avenue. I've lived there for several years. I'm protesting this zoning. All of McKinley is zoned 1A housing. And this lot at eighty-seven thirty-one South McKinley, it's 1A zoning for single housing. And she's trying to get it changed to a spud seven-ten so she can put in anything she wants. And I know she's promised that she'll put down, you know, things that, that won't affect the neighborhood, but after she gets it zoned to three-ten, she can, in a few months, she can change to anything she wants. And this thirty-one, eighty-seven thirty-one South McKinley is in between two nice family homes, which people are living in now. And they keep their property, both people keep their property up very, very well. In fact, all McKinley Street keeps her property up. And I've had trouble trying to get her just to mow the lawn. And when they do mow it, it looks worse than it did before they mowed it. And I think it's up to our zoning commission to see that this does not happen. Nobody on this street wants this zoning changed. I've got names and addresses and phone numbers from thirty or forty people in the neighborhood, which is out of, out of the district. But I've talked to firemen, retired servicemen that live there, and nobody wants this zone changed. And I'm, I'm hoping that our zoning commission can see that there's nothing be good of changing that to a spud seven-ten because it's, it's not really an area for it. The street is not big or strong enough to carry any traffic to speak of. In fact, there's a church right across the street from this seven-ten, or eighty-seven thirty-one. And on Sundays and Wednesdays, the street is, you know, it's, it's pretty busy. And I don't know. It's, we've tried everything we can to keep this zoning from being changed. And I just hope our zoning commission can see that it's not going to help the neighborhood a bit. I don't think it should be changed. Not only is it be bad for the church, be bad for the rest of the neighborhood. And she doesn't keep her property up. She has, well, it doesn't matter what she does, but she doesn't keep it up. And I just hope our zoning commission can see this and does not let this pass so they can put in anything they want there. Thank you.
Thanks, Floyd. Does the spud specify the entrance in and out of the storage?
Yes, this spud specifically only allows exit only onto McKinley. No entrance will be permitted. Couple of things that I failed to point out, and Mr. Jackson pointed out, there's a very large church to the east of this with a very large parking lot that dumps out onto McKinley. It's an active church with a gym in the back. The, this particular site cannot be sewed, which is critical with regard to redevelopment of anything other than something that doesn't require sewer. The thought of building a brand-new house in the middle of houses that were built in the fifties, from a practical standpoint, you know, may not be viable. The, this would require septic or an aerobic system to sewer. The zoning south of us, with the exception of the Kellys, has been upgraded either through SPUD, O1, C3, and the pud fourteen-fourteen. So with the exception of the Kellys south of us, we are abutting a different zoning other than R-A or R1.
Does SPUD provide for any other use?
No.
This is limited, that's specifically...
That's one single use.
Thank you.
All right. So the entrance is, you have to go through the personal storage that already is there to get to it?
That's correct.
That's the only entrance?
It's a gated entrance. You have to have a key to get in.
Okay. David?
Mr. Johnson, is there a limit as to the hours of operation for this storage facility or this particular section of the storage facility?
This, there's no language in there that specifically limits this particular section. The current use is limited to hours of operation. I believe it's seven to ten. I'm not positive about that. It's not twenty-four hours.
Okay. I'd like to propose this if all the parties are agreeable to it. Since there is some, and it may just be a matter of misunderstanding, or maybe it's not, but I would like to consider postponing this for two weeks. And in that time, if we could meet Mr. Johnson and the citizens who live in this area, kind of structure a meeting to talk about this a little bit further because I'm not sure if they completely understand these things at this point in time. So before we move forward, I would like to propose that we delay this for two weeks, and then we'll set up a meeting with those individuals interested and can talk through this a little bit better.
I would agree to that.
All right. I'll take that as a motion for a two-week deferral.
Second.
Okay. Comments or questions? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight-eight-two is a zoning case in Ward seven at twenty-four-ten Northeast Twenty-Third Street. It's currently R4, general residential, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up? I see that the applicant is here. I want to go on ahead because we are going to be here for a long time today. So thank you, applicant. I see the owner of the property here as well. And I also see representatives from the Neighborhood Association, which the applicant followed by request to work with the Neighborhood Association on this particular development. The Neighborhood Association feels very strongly this will be a great improvement to Northeast Twenty-Third Street. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item eight-eight-two. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight-eight-three is a zoning case in Ward six at fifteen-forty Northwest Third Street. It's currently R3, medium-density residential, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. This application is to permit the construction of a surface parking lot to serve an existing business that's next door. There were no protests at the Planning Commission meeting, and it does conform with the Oklahoma City plan. I would move for approval.
All right. Has anyone signed up to speak, Francis? All right, let's cast our votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight-eight-four is a zoning case in Ward one at ninety-one fifty-five Northwest Expressway. It's currently a plan unit development, and it would become a new spud if approved. And James, we have one person that has signed up to speak. Okay. Is the developer here then?
My name's Charlie Allen, Allen Engineering. We developed the spud for this project. The main reason this spud was developed was to allow the back of the, this was already, the PUD nine-twenty-two already allowed for RV storage, outdoor with gravel lots. We've, we're trying to improve that by having enclosed RV storage paved rather than gravel, and then use the back of the RV storage units as our screening from the surrounding property. Otherwise, we'd have to put up a site-proof fence on the property line, our landscaping between the building and the site-proof fencing. So we think we're trying to improve upon PUD nine-twenty-two with this spud. Be happy to answer any questions. The developer is here also to answer any questions.
Right. And we have one person that's signed up. Okay, Webb Brown?
I signed up, like, I'm the owner thinking I might be able to answer any questions.
No, that's, that's fine. You did, that's, that's a good thing to do. So it looks like the developer has signed up to speak.
All right, so, well, yeah, I haven't gotten any, any protests. It's unanimous approval from the Planning Commission, so I move for approval.
Okay. Any comments or questions now? We're getting ready to vote on item eight-eight-four. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item eight-eight-five is a zoning case in Ward one. At one-two-three-one-zero Northwest Expressway, it's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development. James? Is there anybody signed up? Do you want to say something?
I just wanted to mention, this is a kind of a historic, again, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the Treese family, who are relatives of the McGranahan's, which founded this property. And it's a historic reconstruction of a barn that will be used for an event center. There's a lot of historic issues out on that site. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Yeah, it seemed like a, a cool thing. So, and again, it's unanimous approval from the Planning Commission, so I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item eight-eight-five. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight-B consists of three items that have been recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. They are ABC issues. The first is in Ward two. Since, I think Ed stepped out momentarily, why don't we shift on down to item eight-B two? John, this is an issue in Ward seven. It's an ABC at thirty-seven fifteen Spring Lake Drive.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, do we have people who signed up? There are two. All right, I want to hear from the, is the applicant present?
Yeah.
We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Travis C. Smith, nineteen oh-one North Classen Boulevard, Suite two-two-two, Oklahoma City. I think the council's familiar with this property. It's, it's that great big building at the intersection of Thirty-Sixth and Kelly. It has been since nineteen eighty-two some sort of restaurant, nightclub, event center, country club, in the service of alcohol. It was granted a variance in eighty-two. And it has since lost that, that grandfathered status just within the last year and a half. The applicant is now moving to ask this council to grant it an ABC two for the stated reason that it's, because of the way the building is designed and structured, it really can't operate profitably without the service of alcohol. It's an eighteen thousand square foot building with a dance floor, with two bars, a balcony, a stage, a cathedral ceiling, and it's really has no other, it also isn't equipped with a kitchen. So it can serve food, it can host parties, it can host events, but without the service of alcohol, it's, it can't really be used as just a restaurant itself. And so there have been suggestions by the Planning Commission and by others that it could have been divided into retail units or some other use. It's just not economically feasible to tear down a building this large, to totally remodel it, unless the council has an investor or somebody that's willing to purchase it from the owner. And I'd be happy to field questions and answer more specifics, or give you where to go.
I'm going to hold my comments after, until after we hear from the individuals who have signed up to protest, and I got a map four for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Protesters, Mr. Mayor?
We have two people that have signed up to speak. Richard Labarque?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Richard, we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Labarque, eight-twenty Northeast Sixty-Third Street. I'm an attorney for Park Estates. Park Estates, Your Honor, is the shopping center directly across Spring Lake Drive from the subject. My clients have a comparably sized building, actually likely a bit bigger, which, which they redeveloped, spent some money on remodeling. They're one-hundred percent leased with businesses which are good contributing members of the community, including a couple of churches, Dollar General, Beauty Town, Black's Flowers, Joy and Trinity Printing, a barber shop, a real estate office, businesses which are positive things for the northeast quadrant in this area. We opposed a similar application for a variance a year ago on this same subject by the same folks. And in the course of that, I, I pulled a lot of crime stats from the police department, which was startling. The applicant lost at that time and then took their case to district court, lost again. And now we're here on a substantially similar effort. Of course, this, this one's an actual zoning change rather than a variance, but the same underlying rationale still very much applies. We believe it's evident that this business is seeking an ABC two. It's pretextual, that it, there is little chance that this would actually be principally a restaurant or anything of the kind, that it's, it's a very, very large building intended to serve foods. And we think that's a situation that the council ought not, in its wisdom, permit. You'll see that immediately adjacent to the north, Your Honor, is the Mount Olive Senior Residential Cottages Community. And there's, the opportunity for tragedy, if this were to be permitted, is, is quite high.
Okay, thank you. Ray Downs?
Ray Douglas.
Ray Douglas, my apologies.
I'm Ray Douglas with the Great Mount Olive Baptist Church, ten-twenty Northeast Forty-second. We're just north of that. And then we have the Mount Olive Cottages that he resupped to, just north of that on the property line. Also, Valerie Thompson with the Urban League is here, and, and a joint development of those cottages. We're opposed to having a liquor license, primarily for the same reasons he spoke of. It's a nuisance to the community. When they had the liquor license, it sometimes terrorized with the violence and increased crime that the police spoke about at the Planning Commission hearing. It, it often terrorizes those senior residents there. And if they had the liquor license, the crime and the activity that increases on weekends from the trash, loitering, noise, pollution, all of those goes to decrease the quality of life of these citizens that have worked hard and want to be able to enjoy their final years.
All right. Thank you for coming down, Ray. All right, John?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the applicant and protesters for coming down. And also, I see a lieutenant from the vice unit. The lieutenant gave a presentation on the Planning Commission that spoke on why this should not be approved. And I personally know, because when it did have a liquor license, I know several individuals who got shot and stabbed at that location. Several. I can remember then Councilwoman Willie Johnson. She used to, the, the police department used to have to have approximately fifteen police cars at this location. You talk about you, that it's not feasible for the, the owner of the property to do something with that property. If you look at all the crappy shopping centers in Oklahoma City, it's owned by that one owner. That one owner. I have issues with that. I have strong issues with that. He owns two sh- He owns two shopping centers in that corridor. Two shopping centers. Far too long, he has held up northeast Oklahoma City for his economic development. Far too long. So, Mr. Mayor, I move to deny this.
Okay. Anybody here else here willing to speak on this item? We have a motion for denial. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Item is denied. We can go back now to item A, B, one. This is an A, B, C issue at thirty-one hundred North Portland. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today?
I'm for the applicant.
Okay.
It's the same, it's an application for an A, B, C two. It's on Thirty-first in Portland. It's the same sort of situation. It's a ten thousand square foot building, has an equipped kitchen, tables, chairs, dining hall. The applicant wishes to use it as a restaurant with the service of alcoholic beverages, and that's, and I'd be happy to field questions as well. It's, one difference between this, this property is that it's in a shopping center. It has three other, as you can see on the map, A, B, C one, A, B, C two, there's another A, B, C one, and there's actually a non-conforming use that's the equivalent of an A, B, C three. So, essentially, you have four, four other units in this shopping center, all allowed to serve alcoholic beverages. This particular unit currently cannot and is willing to, or is applying to get the service of alcohol in its unit.
Let's get some advice from planning, as the, the planning commission denied this application. John, do you have any light you can shed on that?
It's a similar situation. There's a history of calls, noise violations. I don't have the record, the police records, but those issues are all the same, or similar to the ones in the previous application. Planning commission felt it wasn't appropriate, felt there was a concentration here, and there was not really a reason to extend those, that concentration.
Right. Well, I'll look for a, a motion then on this item.
Okay. And again, this, we're talking about the same property owner, who has these crappy, crappy shopping centers, that he tries to make these into clubs that produce crime in communities. I move to deny.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. That item is denied.
Thank you.
On item eight B three, this is a billboard issue in Ward three at eighty-four fifteen Southwest Fifty-ninth Street. It's a planning unit development. We've become a new simplified planning unit development. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I do take exception, sir, to your characterization that this is a billboard, this is an electronic sign issue, not a billboard. I see a difference there. And for those who didn't know, I'm still against litter on the stick, but this is not litter on the stick, this is a whole different situation. Has anybody signed up? There were no protesters at the planning commission meeting, but it has an interesting history, so the applicant is present, if you would, sir.
Thank you. Dennis Box, I'm here for the applicant. Mr. Johnson also represents applicant. And I, I think Councilman McAteer, number one, we want to thank you for allowing us to meet with you on several occasions. You have been very strong in opposition to what the original application was and is no longer, so I agree. This is not a billboard case, it's a case that deals with ten uses that are allowed within a little commercial pod. The developer purchased one hundred acres, and so has all the land surrounding this property. Will be developing that for duplexes and other residential uses. This corner piece, you could have eventually a braum's or other uses that would be commercial in nature. But one of the things that the property owner would like was to have signage. There is signage across the street on the bank property. When they originally came in, Mayor, you're right, it, one of the uses dealt with a standard billboard, and Councilman McAteer made it real clear that was not acceptable and would not accept that in his ward. So, we have gone back and we have limited this to a E M D one on the sign. It's one hundred and fifty square feet. The height is fifteen feet above grade, and Mr. Johnson has done some survey work, and I think the, the grade goes down between three and a half and four feet. So, from the base of the sign would be eighteen feet, but it'd be fifteen from the grade elevation on Highway one fifty-two. We're going to have a planner, and then at night, after ten o'clock, the E M D will be turned off. So, this will assist the developer in his development. It will provide for what we think is appropriate commercial uses and have an appropriate sign on the property. So, we would ask with the amendments that you approve this application.
All right. Thanks, Dennis.
And I have the changes they have made to the application, and the renderings that have been given about what the electronic sign would appear to, with the limited use, with there being no protest, I move for approval and open it up for the council, if they have any questions they'd like to ask.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Okay.
One monument-oriented sign, eighteen feet from the, from the ground, fifteen feet from the elevation of the highway, one hundred and fifty feet of, square feet of signage, turned off at, what, ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
And has it been cited, Dennis? Do we know where it's, exactly where it's going to go, or?
It's going to go in the corner of the property as shown.
And that's Highway one fifty-two?
Yes.
And Southwest Fifty-ninth Street?
Yes.
Is the sign going to go in right now, before there's any commercial development, or is it going to go in with the commercial development?
It has not been determined. Right now, he's out building homes. He purchased a hundred acres, and so the timing on the commercial and signage is, has not been determined yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Larry, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight C is an ordinance up for final hearing today. This has to do with electronic purchasing. Council's been briefed and had opportunities to ask questions before.
Electronic bidding, yeah, actually.
Got it.
Go through that process.
Electronic bidding, not electronic purchasing.
Move the item.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions on item eight C? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. The emergency has been requested.
Move the emergency.
Cast your votes on the emergency, and the emergency passes for item eight C, eight zero. Eight D has to do with park rates. Again, this is an ordinance on a final hearing. This has been introduced in prior council meetings. Is there anyone here today hoping to speak on this issue? All right, how about a motion then?
Move the item.
Is there a second on eight D?
A second, but I have a, a question.
Uh-huh.
On the fee structure, will those be designed just to recover our costs? There's no profit in this far.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, these don't recover our full costs.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight E is a series of items that come to us from the traffic commission. The first is in Ward seven, and it's a parking issue. John, you okay with this?
I'm okay.
All right.
Okay with it, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item eight E one. Passed unanimously. Item eight E two is a traffic issue in Ward six.
I'll move the item.
Yeah. Is there a second on item eight E two?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight E three is also a traffic issue in Ward six. How about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight E four is a parking issue in Ward seven. John, you all right with this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight E five is again a parking issue in Ward six.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight K is a public hearing. This has to do with ambulance code. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item eight K? All right, any comments from council?
Yes, sorry.
Oh. Eight F. And we have someone that has signed up?
Not on yet.
Okay, yeah, it was my mistake. I, I put a line through it, and it changed the alphabet on me. Item eight F is a public hearing regarding the ambulance code, and I take it no one has signed up to speak on this issue. How about a motion then, if no one on council has a comment?
Move the item.
Okay, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight G is a public hearing on the downtown bid. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item eight G?
Move the item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Item eight G passed unanimously. And item eight H is a companion item.
Move the item.
Second.
Ratifies the assessment role. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
We need the emergency.
The emergency has been requested for item eight H.
Move the emergency.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes nine zero. Item eight I is a similar item, this one is the stockyards bid. This is also a public hearing. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item eight I?
Move the item.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then the companion item is item eight J.
Move the item.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Do we need the emergency on this?
We do.
I'd move the emergency.
Cast your votes, and it passes nine zero. We're on to item eight K. These, this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have one person that has signed up to speak. Are there any others? All right, I'll ask Edwina Bull and Luciano Romero. Do you all want to come up together? Charles, this is item eight K one A. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
My name's Edwina Bull, two-twenty-one North Island Street, Oklahoma City.
Okay. What can you tell us about this property?
Well, this property, at the time, we were fixing to, fixed it, well, we were having too much financial problems and family problems that were, were in and out of the hospital. And at the time, we got the notice to fix up our little house. Well, we had a death in the family, and we told the, told the lady that give us a little bit more time to get it fixed. But right now, we have started on it, and we got the roof all, all starting on the roof, and see, we could have a little bit more time to, because we live on a fixed income.
Yeah. The property doesn't look good, but your intentions are to, to fix it up?
Fix, yes, yes. And we've already started on the roof. And getting it, you know, we want to just go ahead and try to fix it ourselves.
Ma'am, does this house have any utilities?
No, no.
Does it have heat and air, or?
No, it don't have no kind of utilities on.
And, and no roof, essentially?
Yes, it has roof, but we, right here in the corner where you see, we've already fixed that and took all the other old shingles and everything off from there to re-repair, repair the roof. Right there, it's already been fixed, right here where you see it in the corner.
Now, I, I personally can't imagine how much money it will take in order to get this structure to a place where
Yeah.
you might be able to rent it, and in the meantime, it's a real danger, it would appear, to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so, Charles, have you been back by it to see if any work's been done?
Those are, the sixteenth is when we were back by it.
Oh, sorry, right.
That's fairly quickly. The, we show no permits have been pulled for any kind of restructuring on, construction on any of this. The roof's, you know, it's collapsed, got holes in it. The structural members of the roof are, are decayed, that they'll have to replace all those, like, no permits have been pulled. I don't know how they would replace the roof. And this is an accessory structure to the house. This is not the main house.
Okay.
But I think the cost of it's going to far outweigh the value of what it's going to be there.
I, I'm afraid I would agree with you. Ma'am, did you understand what our, what Charles just said?
No.
Okay. He, he said that the cost to fix this will exceed the value of the structure, once you've finished fixing it. That you'll spend more money to fix it than it's worth, which is not generally a very So, I would go ahead and move that we leave it on. And if, if you'd like to continue to try to do some work, you're welcome to work with our staff.
Okay, do we, do we need, need to go and give us a permit to do all this?
You can do, yes, you can do no work without a permit.
Okay.
You need, you need to get a permit from the city to be able to do the work. But I, I'm probably overstepping my bounds to say
Where do we, where do we get that?
I want you to think, think hard about it, living on a fixed income.
Yes.
Make a good decision about whether or not it, it's a good investment to spend your money trying to fix the structure. Okay?
So, we're going to leave it on, and if you'll work for city staff, get the proper permits, you are legally okay to continue to improve the facility. Our concern is that, is that the property is just too far in disrepair to make it a good financial investment for you. But again, that's your call, not ours. And for the safety of the neighborhood, we have to
Yes.
we have to move forward if you can't get it back up in a working condition.
Okay, like, you give us a time limit, or?
It's got, it's got a thirty-day fuse right now. And so, you'll have, if you're showing good progress and our, and our staff is, is, is satisfied that it's going forward
Okay.
you know, it can work out well for you.
Okay.
But there's a lot of work that needs to be done here, and we're concerned about the collapse and a lot of other structural issues on this property that make it a danger to the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay? If you'll just get a card from Charles and, and communicate with him, you can
Okay.
proceed as you wish.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down.
Anyone else here to speak under an item listed under eight K? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight L is a series of items that are unsecured. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight L? Okay, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight M is a series of revocable right-of-way permits. These are for events that the applicants are hoping to hold in the city. Item eight M one is the Children's Hospital Volunteers, hoping to hold an event called the Boo Boo Dash. And it looks like Sarah Jacobson has signed up to speak. Are you Sarah?
Yes.
Tell us about the Boo Boo Dash.
Okay. My name's Sarah Jacobson. I'm the director of Child Life and Volunteers for the Children's Hospital and the Children's Hospital Volunteers Organization. The Boo Boo Dash is our second annual five-K run fundraiser. We'll be holding it on the campus of the Children's Hospital and the surrounding streets, just around the OU H S T campus area. We have used the same approved route from the USA Track and Field sanctioned, sanctioning organization as have other five-Ks on the area. The event will take place on October sixth, that's a Sunday, in the afternoon. We are using Action Safety Supply, which is an approved vendor recommended by your Parks and Special Events Departments for our safety, our traffic plan, our safety, I guess, coordination. We're also working with the OU Police and Captain Schofield to make sure that the areas are secure during the race. It's a family-friendly event. We'll have kids in costumes and runners and try to promote healthy lifestyles for families.
All right, how about a motion there? It's in Ward seven, John. You okay with it?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also thank you, Children's Hospital. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Item eight M one passed unanimously. Thanks, Sarah. Item eight M two is a request from the Capitol Hill Main Street to hold the Fiesta de las Americas, and that's in Ward four. Pete?
Somebody here to talk. Good morning. My name is Jorge Hernandez, and I am the executive director for Capitol Hill Main Street here in Oklahoma City. This year, this Saturday, we'll be celebrating our eighth annual Fiesta de las Americas in historic Capitol Hill. We invite you to come out for an all-day family fun-filled event. And it starts at nine AM with a wonderful parade that starts out in Capitol High School, goes north on Walker to Southwest Twenty-Fifth, and then right into the historic Business District. And it starts at 9:00 AM with a wonderful parade that starts out in Capitol High School, goes north on Walker to South of 25th, and then right into Historic Business District. After that, we have two venues now for entertainment, for dancing, traditional music, and food and games for the whole family. So, please come out. I hope the rain will hold off for one, a couple more days. But it should be a fun day. And once again, we're working with a lot of leaders in the area to put this event. We have great sponsors and we're excited to do this once again this year.
All right, this is an issue in Ward 4. So, Pete, you okay with this?
Yes, it's great. It's a great event. Yeah, I'll want to come out and see it. I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Item 8M2, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 8M3 is a request to hold an event called Hits Running Festival. And Vinnie Card has signed up to speak. Good morning, Vinnie. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Oh, good morning. Vinnie Card, 319 Main Street, Sagerties, New York.
Okay.
I have new course maps. So, good morning. I'm Vinnie Card from Representing Hits Inc. out of Sagerties, New York. And we appreciate this opportunity to present you with the approval for a running race that we hope will take place on October the 19th and 20th of this month. We are a special events management company that formed over 30 years ago from New York. And we are the largest producers of hunter jumper horse shows in the world. We formed an endurance division in 2011, and we have run over 18 events with over 90 races under our belt so far. We offer full marathon, half marathon, 10Ks, 5Ks, and a family fun run for a mile for everybody. So, we're hoping to reach out and grab everybody's interest in any distance possible here. Some of the key features on our course map there, you'll see that we are looking to run through the Capitol complex. And this year, we're also hoping to, in our first year, this is the first year for the event, so we are looking to attract close to 1,500 people to sign up for this race over the weekend, over Saturday and Sunday. I recently just came from Omaha where we had produced a race with 5,000 people in it over the weekend at the Ameritrade Park. We've been working with Major Hill on the traffic plans to make sure that it has minimal impact on your roads and streets throughout the weekend, so everything will flow smoothly and stuff. And also with Mike Murphy from the emergency departments for the medical and everything like that for our race.
Okay, so because of some ODOT construction, you're going to need to do a different route than the one that was applied for?
Yes, sir. Is that right? Staff okay with the, with the different route?
Okay. Looks like we're good.
Oh, ma'am.
Goes through three wards. Meg, do you want to speak?
I am very familiar with the Hits Horse House. My sister's in the horse business and participates in many of these. They do a great job around the country.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
I hope you'll stay to the same standard with this.
Oh, very much so.
New adventure for you. I would move approval.
All right, any comments or questions from council? All right, is the, is the motion as amended?
Yes, the motion is to accept the word as amended.
Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Item 8A4 is another running event in Ward 6 called Healthy Living, Healthy Planet Fall Fitness Expo. And April Harrington has signed up to speak.
Hi, I'm April Harrington.
Tina Hilbert.
Okay, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
1235 Southwest 2nd, Oklahoma City.
4421 Northwest 20th.
Thank you for coming down. Tell us about the fitness festival.
We're having another festival in the Farmers Market District. We've found that it is a great place to have people gather in the community. This one is focused on healthy living. We will have a fitness stage where we'll be doing fitness demos throughout the day and then having vendors around the Farmers Market District area focused on healthy living, healthy planet. We'll also have, focus on local food in the district. We'll also have some music.
It will also be a family-friendly event and free to the community. So, we're quite pleased to be able to offer something that families can attend, their children can play and learn about fit play, which is very important for families and children to remain healthy.
I really appreciate the focus on fitness and the return to Farmers Market. It is a great venue for this kind of an event, and I just hope you keep bringing these back because we really enjoy coming in and spending some time down there. I would move approval of the event.
All right, cast your votes on item 8M4. Passed unanimously.
Thank you. I hope to see you there.
Item 8N is the resolution that would approve or not approve the streetcar route from Maps 3. Councilwoman Salyer, did you want to speak on the, on the front end of this item?
Yeah, if you don't mind. A couple of comments. First of all, I feel incredibly fortunate to be here today and to be able to participate as our city takes what I think is the first really significant step in the development of a robust regional transit system. I want to applaud that public process that has occurred over the last three years. And I want to thank all of the citizens and volunteers who've made participation in this process to bring us where we are today. As I have disclosed on many prior occasions, I've been a property owner in the area of 8th and Broadway for more than 25 years. To avoid any possible perception of a conflict of interest in this matter, I will not vote today on the proposed streetcar route. But before I recuse myself, I'd like to read into the record the following letter that I received from Dean Valerie Couch of the Oklahoma City University School of Law. And it reads, Dear Councilwoman Salyer, I'm writing to express Oklahoma City University School of Law's support for two items on the September 24th, 13 council agenda. The first item is the proposed Zeta Streetcar Route. Oklahoma City University School of Law purchased the historic Oklahoma High School located at 800 North Harvey in December of 2012. We plan to relocate the law school to the building in late 2014. Our move will bring approximately 700 faculty, students, and staff members into Midtown on a daily basis. The location is extremely attractive to the law school because of its proximity to courts, governmental agencies, law firms, and other legal employers. The proposed Zeta Route running immediately east of our building on Robinson will be a valuable and well-used resource for our students, faculty, and staff members as they commute between homework and the law school. Many students work at law firms and other employers located in the downtown area. The School of Law currently offers numerous externship placement opportunities located in the downtown area served by the proposed streetcar routes. Locating a streetcar line on Robinson will enhance Oklahoma City University School of Law's role as the city's law school. It will play a vital role in intertwining our energetic law school community with the legal, business, and nonprofit communities served by the streetcar. The Robinson Streetcar Line will help draw the surrounding community to the many symposias, conferences, pro bono and public service events, public lectures, and educational programs offered by the law school. Future expansion of the streetcar to connect the currently proposed route with our main university campus at 23rd and Black Builder would yield additional benefits. The second item I'm writing in support of is Midtown Urban Renewal Plan. Senior law school administrators provided input on early drafts of the plan and worked in consultation with the architects and planners as they developed the final plan. We are very pleased to see several surface parking lots adjacent to our building identified as catalytic sites by the plan. We support the plan's class and extension proposal as a way to create a pedestrian corridor that connects our facility with Automobile Alley and 10th and Walker. This corridor would be heavily utilized by our students, faculty, and staff as they explore Midtown. The corridor would also encourage the public to become involved in the life of our law school. As the class and extension proposal is developed, we would appreciate learning about any planned streetscaping improvements or public art installations so we may integrate them into our plans for the public spaces surrounding our building. I urge you in favor, I urge you in favor of adopting both the Zeta Streetcar Route and Midtown Urban Renewal Plan. Thank you for your opportunity to add the input on these plans. Thank you, Mayor.
Love the opportunity.
Jim, I think we have a presentation from
We do. Jacobs is here this morning, our consultant on this project. We're going to start with Lee Nichols, who's going to give a overall presentation. This is the same presentation that's been given to several public meetings, but particularly the Maps 3 Subcommittee on Modern Streetcar and also the Maps 3 Committee. And then Rick Gustafson is here to talk following that. And then Alan Zert is also here, and Alan is the expert on maintenance facilities. And we'll talk about that. And then following the presentation, there's something you have not seen, and it's about a two-minute animated video of what the streetcar could look like. And so, that'll, after the presentation, Lee will come back up and run that presentation.
Thank you and good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to come here and present this to you today. Real quick, the agenda. We're going to, going to run through the project evolution and how we got here today, our evaluation process, the phasing and funding scenarios. Then we'll get into the routes, the conceptual routes, and the recommended route framework. Then we'll discuss the maintenance facility evaluation and next steps, and then again, show you the, the brief conceptual visualization of the route. Back in 2006, the Fixed Guideway Study was finalized. It was a study that was initiated by COPTA. Now, the study identified several transit modes for a 2030-year horizon, identified commuter rail, bus rapid transit corridors, an enhanced bus network, and a downtown modern streetcar circulator. And 2008 kicked off Let's Talk Transit. Now, the seven public workshops held in March, April, and May of 2010 had about 300 participants, and over 1,100 online surveys were filled out. And this really laid the foundation for the Alternatives Analysis that COPTA started in, in 2000, late 2008, and also laid the framework for the Maps 3 Streetcar Referendum, which was approved in 2009. In 2010, the, the modern streetcar, Transit Modern Streetcar Subcommittee first met, I think it was November 3rd. And they've had 30 meetings since that beginning, the first meeting. And also, COPTA was awarded a Tiger II Planning Grant, which helped enhance some of the planning that's gone on today with the streetcar. In 2011, we, the results of the Alternatives Analysis had the locally preferred alternative. And then in 2012, there was the completion of the Intermodal Hub Master Plan, which identified the Santa Fe Station as the Intermodal Hub. And also, the Transit Subcommittee selected Concept 1 as their preferred route. And that brings us to 2013, where we'll be in the fresh eyes route evaluation of the downtown streetcar circulator. Now, just kind of go over our evaluation process. Again, we started off with two routes. We had the locally preferred alternative from the Alternatives Analysis and Concept 1, that was a preferred route from the Transit Subcommittee. And we took a fresh eyes approach. And we really meant a fresh eyes approach. We actually brought in Mark Dorn with URS and Rick Gustafson with Shields, Oblix, and Johnson to lead the evaluation process of the new routes. Jacobs was involved in the Fixed Guideway Study and the AA, and we really took to heart this fresh eyes approach. So, we had URS and SOJ lead the route evaluation to, you know, bring new ideas and thoughts to the process. Now, during this initial fresh eyes, we looked at the complete downtown corridor. We looked at many different route options and came up with eight potential routes. From there, we did our initial evaluation and had our four potential route options that were shortlisted. And then we went and we had a public meeting back in July, and we refined our evaluation. And then today, where we have our recommended route framework that was presented to the MAPS Subcommittee last month and to the MAPS Board, both approved.
I'm Rick Gustafson with Shields, Oblix, Johnson, participant with Mark and Lee and Jacobs team on the fresh eyes evaluation of the streetcar. Just to remind you, the council adopted a budget, a Phase 1 budget of $104 million, of which 94.4 was for the Phase 1 of the modern streetcar and 9.75 million for the acquisition of the hub, the Intermodal Hub. And then Phase 2, scheduled for 2021, was then budgeted at $24.7 million. So, those were the goals, to evaluate both the route, but then also make sure that we were evaluating the route in terms of the ability for the council to consider in the future the Phase 2 options that could be added. So, the shortlisted conceptual routes, as you saw in the next slide. Oh, I get to, I'm sorry. No, I turned it off. There we go. No? Ah, that one. Now he'll get us back. I apologize for this. I need some training. There we go. The, the four routes were the hybrid, the reverse LPA, the Zeta Route, and what we called the Zeta Plus Route. These were, then, we conducted a fresh eyes workshop, worked with the advisory committee, and developed the attributes and rankings for each of those. What we have recommended and brought through the advisory committee that supported this option, as well as through the workshop participants, is the Zeta Route, as forwarded to you as the recommended route framework. It connects to the Downtown Transit Center, Automobile Alley, Intermodal Hub, the Convention Center, Bricktown, and Midtown, and accomplishes the objectives and think, we think, give you a very viable first line as a downtown circulator, which was your objective. It is one block from the new park being developed as part of the MAPS project, and it does maximize the economic development potential. The single-track miles are approximately 4.757 miles. Our current planning cost estimate is ranging from 99 to 109 million dollars. And we do offer to, two design options that we believe would benefit from engineer, some preliminary engineering work. Those design options are the Midtown Loop, and they're featured in Midtown and along Broadway by the dashed lines to show you that there are still route options that would be considered. And that, the Midtown Loop is the mechanism that routes its way through 10th and 11th Avenue. And the double-track Broadway option would certainly be considered as opposed to the couplet, so that you would have a double-track component on Broadway. Those will be considered as we develop design options. And then finally, the estimated operations and maintenance cost annually would be, would range from two and a half to $3 million, depending upon the level of frequency that you select and the service level. So, the next, that's the options and the evaluation that we conducted and the recommendation we're making to you this morning.
I'm Alan Reed with Jacobs. We've been going through a process of locating or coming up with a preferred site for the streetcar storage and maintenance facility. That process has been based on four key sets of evaluation criteria, which you can see on the screen here. First is proximity to the proposed alignment, whatever that final alignment is, whether or not it meets the facility requirements in terms of accommodating the building, the site functions, vehicle storage, and so forth. Urban adaptability in terms of how the site works with existing and proposed land uses, current zoning, and so forth. And then real estate issues with regard to displacements, land costs, and impact on economic development. So, based on that criteria, we initially selected 11 sites. Those were pretty quickly boiled down to four shortlisted sites, which you can see as the yellow dots on the map here. Two of those are on the north side of Bricktown, adjacent to the existing railroad right-of-way on city-owned property currently used as parking lots. The third is to the east of Bricktown, next to 235. And then a fourth site to the south, adjacent to Union Station at the intersection of I-40 and Walker. We're currently in the process of going through a second-tier evaluation on these, testing these sites to make sure that they meet the program. these sites to make sure that they meet the program in terms of looking at the layouts for the facility and so forth, looking further into some of the real estate issues, and we should have a recommendation on a preferred concept later this fall to the MAPS Committee. Thanks.
Okay, now we're going to run through the video real quick. It's about a three, three-and-a-half minute long video. Now, this is a conceptual representation of what the route could look like. This is not final. There's a lot of engineering that needs to take place. It just gives you an idea of what the route would look like when it's implemented. As soon as we get it going. Now, you'll notice that in the upper left-hand corner of your screen, you'll see the street, so you can identify the direction of travel that the streetcar is going, is running on. And this is the streetcar running west on Reno. This is an example of a typical streetcar stop. This is near, on the Cox Convention Center in Chesapeake Arena. This will kind of give you a view from the inside of the streetcar. And here, the streetcar is traveling north on Hudson. Again, a pedestrian side view of the northbound on Hudson. This is a streetcar turning east on Fourth Street. Again, along east on Fourth. And this is going in front of the Memorial. And this is, again, still east on Fourth, and we're making the turn to go north on Broadway. Here, you can see how the streetcar would interact with on-street parking. Really, it works really well. The white line identifies parkers to make sure their vehicles inside of that white line to avoid any possible damage from the streetcar. This would be, this is in the, we're going south on Dewey in the St. Anthony's Hospital area. Again, a view from inside the vehicle. And this is eastbound on 10th Street. Now, we're going south on Robinson. This is the DEQ Building, and coming up on the Memorial. This would be the view to the Memorial if you're inside the vehicle. And again, this is all conceptual, and it is definitely subject to change, but this would give you an idea of how the streetcar would fit into the urban environment. This is within the Bricktown area. This is eastbound on Sheridan. And making the southbound turn on the Joe Carter, going behind the ballpark. You can see the residence in and Sonic Headquarters, and turning west on Reno. And again, Sonic, and then the ballpark there on the right. Now, this, the streetcar won't normally run this fast. It's just kind of a representation, so we can show you various segments of the streetcar. Can you go back one slide? Now, this is just kind of our next steps to move forward, is we need to determine the propulsion type of the vehicle, identify the final location for the storage and maintenance facility, get into preliminary engineering. The first step within preliminary engineering is to do the route refinement, identify these design options, then do rail and vehicle procurement, do an economic development plan on the preferred corridor. So how, you know, what the plan could help develop, you know, implement some of those economic development opportunities, and then start looking at some route, Phase Two route planning. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Again, we have Alan Zert, Mark Dorn, and Rick Gustafson here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right.
Just to frame this a little bit, you know, the funding was approved in '09. What we're talking about today is really the route selection. There's a lot of decision points yet to be made and have been made already on this streetcar. Propulsion, you know, the final plans when it goes out to bid. There's a lot of other decision points out here today. Today, we're really talking about a route selection, and even that isn't exactly final. Because as we get there, when we refine it, there's a couple of options that we're looking at as we go forward. There's a double-tracking option for a portion of it that we're still looking at. But we're really trying to get down a step and limit the amount of options that are out there and try to focus on the direction we're going at this point in time. So this is just a step in the process. It's a large process.
A question, Your Honor. Our approval this morning will be for the conceptual plan and all the alternatives? And leave it, will it come back to the City Council when the alternatives are determined?
It's going to come back as it goes out to bid. It'll come back with a package that'll have those things refined as they become refined.
Okay. Will they be subject to the council's approval at that point?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. So we have opportunities for questions now with the consultants. We have a number of people that have signed up to speak, so council can get involved now and afterwards at Europrog, is that it?
I just, I'd like to ask Rick a couple of questions, and Boyd, if you can pull those. And I'll just start off by characterizing myself as the loyal opposition. I will certainly respect the will of the council. I've spent a lot of time and traveled and met national thought leaders. I met Mr. Gustafson first at the Rail Evolution Meeting last year in Los Angeles. I hope to see him again next month in Seattle. And I will work to make the best streetcar system possible, but I do express apprehension about moving forward with this route in this manner at this time. And I just want to ask you, Rick, going back to when we started, this was the first kind of rendition of a route in 2006, correct?
Correct.
And it went up Walnut, it went into northeast Oklahoma City, and it went through the Health Science Center, and then it formed this loop. It didn't go to Broadway, didn't go to Automobile Alley, correct?
As it's shown up there is what we did.
Okay. So then, the next route that, was this in 2011 as part of the Alternatives Analysis? And between that time before, say, the vote on MAPS III is in December of 2009, during the time between the Fixed Guideway Study, did we bring in experts and decide upon alternative routes or debate alternative like couplets versus linear versus a hub-and-spoke system? Did we settle upon any other route, or did we show any other route to the public besides that one that I showed before?
Now, what we had, I mean, as the timeline showed, we did actually start some Let's Talk Transit Dialogue, which was early in the process. That was in '08. At that point in time, we just started talking about conceptually what would the public like to see if we, if we had a streetcar, where, what would be important to them, what would be the destination points. We went through that process. They did talk a little bit about couplet concept and what that meant. But really, that process then sort of stopped before we got heavy into the AA and really let the MAPS process play out, the election play out. And then, once we knew that the streetcar was an item that was on the MAPS vote and was approved, it was really that, at that point, that we got heavy into the Alternatives Analysis, which was part of the federal funding process, because we really felt with local funding in hand, we then had a better chance to go out and solicit federal funding, which would allow us to develop a much larger project.
Did you, you didn't settle, did you settle upon any other specific-
No.
Like a hub-and-spoke system or anything like that?
No, not at that point.
So in 2011, you had this couplet, and then you also had a linear route that went down Fourth Street, up Lincoln, over on Eighth Street, and up Phillips into the heart of the Health Science Center.
Correct.
And then you applied for a Tiger II Planning Grant, and you, and we received that, correct? Which my understanding is a $375,000 grant that looks at things like economic development, ridership, livability, along potential different streetcar routes, and although we didn't qualify for federal grants, because we included this line over through northeast Oklahoma City to the Health Science Center, the federal government asked us to study that.
That's correct. Let me just clarify one point that you made, and that is, we actually, when we applied for the Tiger II Grant, at that point in time, we were still in what we thought was the process for potential New Starts funding. And so, we actually, when we were given the grant, the grant was actually for environmental analysis. Once we determined, once we learned from the Federal Transit Administration that we were no longer a candidate to stay in the New Starts process, we then negotiated with them to allow us to retain that money, that Tiger II money, and use it for planning purposes. And so, that's where we moved to, as you described, the process, looking at economic development, livability, looking at ridership, and a health assessment actually was another component part of that study. We were able to salvage the money and use that for continued studies, which are supporting the MAPS project, but independent of it, because the federal, the FDA still felt very strongly that our LPA needed to be addressed in total, and part of that was the Health Science Center connection. So we are looking at that leg in terms of ridership impact, health assessment impact, et cetera.
And my understanding is that that study will be completed in about five weeks at the end of October.
That's our expectation. It will be done in the end of October.
But this Thursday, for example, there's a meeting of developers, officials from the Health Science Center and transit planners, looking at the economic development potential of a streetcar line through northeast Oklahoma City to the Health Science Center. Because while there's 700 people at the law school, the Health Science Center has things like 4,000 students, 5,000 employees at OU, a total of maybe 15,000 employees there every day, 300,000 outpatient visits, 120,000 emergency room visits, 30,000 hospital admissions, and an expressed desire to build, to expand south. And so there's the potential, I would think, for economic development, potentially massive economic development, if you combine housing for all those thousands of people with expansion of the Health Science Center. So those kind of things will be explored, is my understanding, and that will commence this Thursday.
That's correct. Actually, I think there's meetings with developers tomorrow, and then specifically Health Science Center folks on Thursday.
Okay. Can you, can you show the next slide? And this is the last question, Rick, is just pointing out that we are kind of an outlier in terms of cities that are building streetcar systems in terms of the lack of a robust transit network. Cities like Seattle have some 140 million transit riders a year. Portland, you know, 120, and Oklahoma City, 2.5 million. The next closest would be Cincinnati, that has something like 16 million. I just want to make it clear, because we've talked about this before, that if you build a streetcar system that doesn't have, and as I call other cities, or people call on my behalf to every other city, it seems that Oklahoma City is the only city that is paying for this strictly from its general fund. If the time comes where operations require devoting money from the bus, from such a low level of service from your, from your bus system, from your existing transit system, to help pay for the streetcar, do you believe that the city would be at risk of a Title VI challenge in that you're providing such different levels of service? Frequency every eight to 10 minutes versus every 60 minutes, shelters versus the lack of shelters, et cetera? Is there a risk if we divert money or find ourselves in a situation where we have to divert money from the buses to the streetcar, that we could find ourselves in Title VI challenge?
I think that the challenge that's there is, as you look at a Title VI issue, is that you have to be able to demonstrate that you intentionally did it to hurt the other party. And I think that's a question that is out there. It's been a difficult one for anyone to prove in the past, so that's why I think there's been limited challenges on a Title VI issue. I think you're at risk, literally, from a policy perspective, if you were to say, "I'm going to take, I'm going to damage the rubber tire system by cutting it back in favor of either maintaining or increasing the rail transit." It doesn't necessarily, I can't say specifically that that puts you in a Title VI issue. It's not an issue that I would argue, if I was the transit director, that it would be a policy decision that you should make. But clearly, it's, there's more to it than just simply taking one away. I don't think the difference in terms of frequency of service or the nature of the service is necessarily a Title VI issue. I think many of these systems demonstrate that they may have different standards that way. That in itself is not tough. I think where the issue has come up is when you actually have started taking money away from one to feed the other. And I think that's where the risk is.
Anybody else who have a question for Rick, while he's here? All right, Rick, thanks. All right, we have a number of citizens that have signed up to speak. I'll ask you to keep your comments to a minute or two, because we have so many, but I'll put a maximum of three minutes, as suggested on the form. The first person is Jane Jenkins.
Mayor, member to the City Council, my name is Jane Jenkins. I live at 220 Northwest 19th Street, and I'm the President and CEO of Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated. I am also a member of the Streetcar Subcommittee for MAPS III, and so have been working on this project for a long time, beginning with the Alternatives Analysis that Rick referenced. I'm here to speak in support of the streetcar route. When we first started working on this project, one of my most critical issues was, is that this streetcar had to provide connections for expansion, not necessarily streetcar expansion, but other types, whether it connect to other kinds of transit as a way of forming the base of a central system that could get people around downtown in the immediate environs. I believe that the ZETA Route does that. When you look at a map and you look at where the proposed extensions are, to the west of downtown, to the south of downtown, to the Central Park and Quarters Shore area, as well as, most importantly, to the Health Science Center, where we have a huge population base, then I think that we've done a good job of putting together a route that is totally expandable. There's a route that would go off to Klassen, which I think is a great route for public transit that would reach the neighborhoods of Gatewood, the Plaza District, and OCU. How we expand those is one of those things that City Manager Couch referenced, that we still have a lot more work to do, but we need a starting point to go on. And the starting point is starting with this ZETA Route, that we can really begin to, as he says, start to limit the options, really do the traffic studies, really look at the things that, and the impacts of this type of route, and then what kind of expansion opportunities do exist. So I'm here to speak in support of that. I also handed you a letter from the Bricktown Association, whose Executive Committee last week wanted to show you their support for the route as it goes through Bricktown. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Your Honor, may I ask Ms. Jenkins a question?
Okay.
Can you give just a brief description of how long you've been on the Subcommittee, and to what extent the committee evaluated different alternatives, how much information was provided to you, and if you ever felt like members were not being heard during this process?
Oh, I don't think there was any problem with members of the Subcommittee on the Streetcar Committee ever being heard, you know? I think that they were, that they were, that they were most definitely heard. And I'm sorry, I would guess it was from the time we voted on MAPS in December of 2009, and the subcommittees were formed, you know, in the three to six months following that. So I would guess it has been three years. But prior to that was the Alternatives Analysis, and some of that actually, you know, was running simultaneous. The Alternatives Analysis Committee was a larger group, but contained some members of the Streetcar Committee. I feel like throughout the process, we did get adequate information. We looked at a lot of different routes. This was not a committee where consensus reigned, Councilman Greenwell. There was lots of discussion, lots of dissension, I think lots, but not in a bad way, in a good way, in a way that forced the committee to really look at a lot of the pros and cons of the different types of streetcar routes, what we were doing here regarding ridership, regarding economic development. I feel like we had many, many options that were given, we were given many options from both committee members themselves, who had researched this, as well as the consultants in the end. And what we looked at, and we came together on it in the end, was something, again, that we feel forms the strongest core for a public transit system to serve downtown that is exp- that is expandable, either through rail, or either through rubber wheel trolleys, or even through our bike share system, which has been so successful in that this particular route ties into that, to that, that bike share system, and could impact our, our expansion opportunities for that.
One more question. I'm sorry to delay this. Did you, did the committee ever analyze a non-circular type route, perhaps across, you know, where you would?
That was in the very beginning. I think things like that were discussed probably more in the Alternatives Analysis Committee. And, and I think that when you start to look at, at, at where that, where that ends up, it's, it, it doesn't work well for stopping and changing and turns and such as, and such as that. And I think that this was part of our learning curve as the Subcommittee members, that we, we still are not together as a Subcommittee on whether we should double-track or couplet some part of the, of the, of the track. But we're gonna get through that. That's part of what this step in the process is, is to give us the opportunity to go, to go study that. But I think initially, you know, the view was there would be a, there would be a north-southwest street, a north-southeast street, kind of looking like a tic-tac-toe board, was what some of us went into initially, thinking that, that, that would look like. I, I've learned a lot about transit maps. I, I've learned that I'm not a very good transit designer from some of the workshops that I've been to, because I have people waiting. It stops way too long to, to change. But it's been, I, I really do believe that we have a flexible, expandable, good route in Zeta that will serve the city, not just downtown, but will serve the rest of the city well.
Can I ask a question, just as, as you, as you started, and you, because it does seem like all, all that we have, you know, really looked at or been presented with are couplets and, and a loop. And yet, when I look back about what was talked to the public, it seems like we, we had indicated that we wouldn't do that, that we would go maybe to more of a hub-and-spoke system. We, for example, less than a month from the, from the election, on November 16th, it was said, "This is a very impressive," at a Chamber Breaking Through Luncheon with, with Mayor, our mayor and the little wack, "this is a very impressive system that we've designed." When we went through the fixed guideway study three years ago, we kind of designed a blueprint for Oklahoma City's future transit needs. We designed the streetcar to be a loop. And the more we thought about it, and the more experts we brought into the conversation, we realized that that was a mistake. Because what we realized is if we build a loop, what we're really building is a ride. And you know that, what, that's not the purpose of transit. I mean, transit is to get you to specific places. And so, the line that we currently have in mind is more of a spoken hub-type facility. In other words, you have a facility, this multimodal hub, and then the downtown streetcar would go out from there and then back in from there. And of course, in the future, those will be extended as the private sector or businesses or development occurred in the future. Whereas, you really couldn't extend a loop, you would pretty much close it off. And so, I'm wondering, as you then began right after the election, did you talk about linear routes going out from the multimodal hub and back in to destinations like the Health Science Center?
I think that those discussions, and, and again, my, I've slept many times since then, but I, I, I really believe that those discussions, as I recall them, occurred more in the Alternatives Analysis, you know, environment that was, that was going on somewhat simultaneously. I'm sorry, Rick, I don't remember the dates from, from when one started and the other, other picked up. That's when I remember the linear, you know, hub-and, hub-and-spoke discussions. But I believe that the research the committee did, and some of the research that, that we did on our own, in terms of what streetcars are, as opposed to more like a light rail system, that, that, that the couplet was preferred. Again, let me say that in some parts of the route currently, the committee is still not on the same page regarding double-tracking or couplets, which is why you see some variations there that, that we need to, need to work through. But I, I know that we, we talked about linear, you know, hub-and-spoke type of things. I remember in the beginning, being in groups and drawing various routes that would have related to that, and then being educated by consultants on probably the, the benefits for a situation in Oklahoma City, you know, of the couplet system. I was more of a fan of the linear system. I really wanted to do the tic-tac-toe thing. But, you know, it was shown that that would not, that would not serve the purposes. I believe that we've shown that this route is expandable. So, whether, again, whether it's rail or whether it's, it's other types of transit that expand to it, I, I think that the, the loops, the way that they're designed right now are expandable.
Okay. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Patricia Black?
I can speak from here?
Yes, you can. We'll need your name and address, Patricia.
My name is Patricia Black, 2153 Bridgeville Lane. I live in, in the Bridge Creek area, which is part of Tuttle, the Tuttle City. Oh, excuse me. To quote Mr. Sid Burgess's article in the September 11th edition, The Oklahoma Gazette, and also Tim Farley, they are advertising the walkability, that wonderful now that they've finally developed in the downtown area. And if we, if we can live in Oklahoma City, this is Sid Burgess, "Without a car, we can live anywhere without a car." And Tim Farley's stepping-up article praised Oklahoma City's downtown recent development for increasing the walkability of sidewalks, parks, and plazas. I lived, studied, and worked without a car in the city of Chicago for over 40 years, a city which eliminated streetcars many years ago. The downtown plan for Oklahoma City has just nearly completed repaving all of the streets, and even revised most of the streets to single two, two-way traffic, plus adding bicycle paths. These streets leave a narrow parking even on each side. There is no possible room for train tracks on most of the downtown streets, unless the plan is to have all cars and trucks driving on train tracks, in between the number of streetcars per their schedule. From years of experience, I can tell you that train tracks are a hazard. The tracks become slippery in rain, ice, and snow. They will be a problem for wheelchairs, people with canes, the blind, women in high heels, little children's shoes get caught on the rails, and even cars and delivery trucks having to travel on those rails with their stopping, parking, and unloading. Besides the obvious problems with pedestrians downtown and maneuvering on rails, there are nightmare situations which will occur regularly, because the streetcars are triple-car units. Just considering normal traffic downtown, observing the traffic lights with a three-car unit trying to make it through green, yellow, red lights conveniently, what will happen with a traffic jam or rush hour, or especially with emergency vehicles trying to get through? Not to speak of delivery trucks who are stopped on the street. Will the streetcars be able to clear the intersections when the lights turn red? Or will they further jam up all of the traffic from both directions? Every single intersection where they have to curve and turn. Some ads proposing this Mickey Mouse plan, pardon my expression, suggest that these streetcars will be for tourists downtown. Well, there already is a simple, quaint, transport downtown system called trolley cars. If you think that they have not been so popular in usage, imagine the cost of tearing up all of the newly paved downtown streets for yet another transit system, which tearing up all of those train tracks a few years later, because this idea didn't work out either. MAPS III should actively improve the bus system for express and local routes, including to and from surrounding towns, with an all-route daily and/or monthly travel fee.
Thank you, Patricia.
One more paragraph, excuse me. Oklahoma City is not San Francisco, nor Chicago or New York, which have removed all of their poorly-used streetcar tracks. Streetcars are a quaint idea from the past. Let's keep MAPS III modern, free from impractical ideas promoted by a few who may be seeking to personally somehow profit from this new tax revenue MAPS program. The Devon Towers Modern Design seems to point-
Patricia, you've exceeded the time limit by quite a bit. I'm gonna have to ask you to sit down.
Oklahoma City to the future, and that's it.
Thank you for coming down.
And I propose you read this.
Reverend Jesse Jackson?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Reverend.
I've been asked by Reverend Dr. John Reed to, to read a statement. He was supposed to be here this morning, but he's out of town. And then I had a short one after that.
Okay, thank you. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Reverend Jesse Jackson. I'm the pastor of the East Sixth Street Christian Church at 1139 Northeast Sixth Street here in Oklahoma City. I'm also a part of the JFK Neighborhood Association that meets in our congregation. Mayor and Council, I regret that I have a previously scheduled obligation outside of Oklahoma City, which prevents me from speaking with you today. But because I believe that it is so important that we reconsidered the streetcar route at this time, I've asked Reverend Jackson to read this on my behalf. It is my belief, and a belief from many, from every part of the city, that connecting the streetcar with the OU Medical Center and the surrounding neighborhoods to the downtown area would allow for the greatest amount of economic development, and allow the center to serve as a vital anchor for a new transit system. As you know, the 300-acre complex is a major destination, university and employment center. The campus has more than 10,000, 10,000 patients, visitors, students, and employees per day traveling to the center. With stable and established neighborhoods and significant amounts of vacant land, including that owned by Urban Renewal, development around the campus could allow for thousands of our neighbors the opportunity to buy affordable housing next to a major employment center, and make living without the need for a car a reality. The current orientation of the streetcar route is predictable but not, but also unnecessary, given the economic development that is already growing at a rapid pace in certain parts of the city. For the neighborhoods of the northeast quadrant, a streetcar could provide a much-needed spark to generate new economic development, which most likely would not happen on its own. And I believe that the Tiger Two planning study being conducted now and due out soon will say the same. So, I urge the council to wait and commence with planning only after studying the results of Tiger Two, and a full and forthright comparison between the current route and one which initially connected the Health Sciences Center and the research park to downtown. That's Pastor Reed. From my standpoint, the OU Health Sciences Center is an economic and employment behemoth and juggernaut. This city, quite frankly, does not work without northeast Oklahoma City. Northeast Oklahoma City needs to be served in this manner. It is an integral part of this city, to the core of this city, and like my cufflinks, it draws the rest of this city together. And so, I'm urging the council to wait on this vote. Certainly, we're not opposed to transit system. I am thrilled. I, I thought the concept video was tremendous. I have, I have a tremendous amount of respect for cities. I ride public transportation all over this nation, and I'm waiting on Oklahoma City to get this. But what I'm saying is that I think that before we do that, I think we ought to start with this Health Sciences Center and this part of northeast Oklahoma City, that will connect all those thousands and thousands and thousands of people at the Health Sciences Center, with downtown, with Bricktown, and the rest of this city.
Thank you, Reverend. Joe Sarge Nelson?
Joe Sarge Nelson, I've been here before. And I have to commend the people, excuse my raspy voice. I see the designs and the layouts and this and that, what have you. Y'all have done a, quite a commendable job. I don't doubt that one bit. I've been to all of the meetings they've had. I've been up here a couple of times, griping, and I'm gonna gripe some more. The real system, as we've got it, and the design that has been approved, that you're gonna approve today, goes nowhere. One councilman up here, which I won't even mention his name, has had numerous ideas about the rail system, if it worked, which our present system, transit system, does not. I have a suggestion. We have trolley cars we've used before. We've also had the rail system we've used before, and this same council, not these present members, tore it out for two reasons. One, it was economically unfeasible to even keep it. It kept the city broke. Now, the alternative is, put one of our little red trolleys, Mayor and Council, back in the same route. Try it for 30 days. Same concept of pavement. Let people see where it goes, how it does. And if something so mobile on wheels can do so well, there's a possibility the rail system in its concept will work. But 200,000, I mean, 200, yeah, 200,000, 200 million dollars just to put it in, plus 3 million to run it, that'd need to pay for the land to put it on. Ladies and gentlemen, I suspect we've got some major issues here and major problems. And the lady that spoke before, number two, a man over there, spoke, and I'm sure there's others behind me that's gonna speak. Larry Nichols, CEO of Devon, said this is not a good idea. If we're in a recession, where are we gonna get all this money? The people, the taxpayers, gonna pay for it. 74% of the people that's gonna pay for it are only gonna see it in the newspaper, see it in the radio, see it on television, but they're gonna pay for it. But then they're never gonna get to write it. And I don't consider that a good investment in any sense of the word. I thank you. I'll speak to you later.
Thanks, Joe. Jim Balkenbush?
Thank you, Mayor Cornett, City Council. I am Jim Balkenbush. I reside at 2805 Silverclade Road here in Oklahoma City, lifetime resident. And I'm here this morning to speak against the streetcar plan as it is currently proposed. I feel it is unneeded and unnecessary, because currently it is amply served now with rubber-tired buses, and it can be continued to be amply served and improved by these rubber-tired buses. These buses, as most of us know, have much more flexibility in route changes as the needs of the future indicate. The real need now in Oklahoma, in Oklahoma City, and more so even in the future, is a light rail or rapid transit system from our outlying suburbs to the downtown Oklahoma City area. This, as you know, would include from Edmund, the Normore, the Norman Moore area, Midwest City-Dell City, the northwest Oklahoma City corridor, the airport and I-40 area, and even the Yukon and Mustang areas. And I, it, this has probably been approached, but I believe that there would be funds, supporting funds, for this type of transit system from these outlying cities, Midwest City-Dell City, Norman Moore, and so forth. They may even be more than willing to contribute funds toward an outlying rapid transit system to bring their residents down to the Oklahoma City area. I would hope that the council at this time, and I do appreciate the work and the effort that these consultants and so forth have put forth, but no tracks have been laid at this time. And I think it's at this time, we need to rethink, rethink this, perhaps table it for a while, and think about using this 120 million dollars or more for the beginning, and I might add a hefty beginning, to relieve our commuters from the daily traffic jam getting to work downtown, to and from work downtown. There's far more need for these commuters than this proposed core or inner-city streetcar line. If, at this time, this rapid transit, outlying rapid transit system cannot be funded or could not be planned, and this must be some type of a streetcar system within the city area, then I would propose what we've heard before this morning, to lay these lines out toward the Health Sciences Center for sure, on up to the Capitol, the Historical Building, and the Omniplex, Remington Park and Zoo area, back to Oklahoma City. I think that would be a much more worthwhile use of these funds, and I would appreciate your consideration of this. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ken. Garlon Pruitt? Good morning, Garlon. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Garlon Pruitt, 952 North XXX Road. I come before the council this morning to, we started out with prayer, started out with the pledge, justice for all. I'm in opposition to this particular plan at this particular time for the sole purpose of allowing some inclusion for the northeast quadrant. The Health Science Center, some have made mention of how many more citizens, Oklahomans, would be helped by a different route. I listened to the planners. They stated there are still design options, subject to change. Routes can be changed. I think at this particular time, we'd be hasty in not allowing the study to continue in the manner which it has right now. Has until the end of October. We didn't have a rail system prior to now. What's the emergency? Oklahoma is expanding. We're growing. We're progressing. We support that 100%. We support the growth. We support the, uh, streetcar. But I think right now, in order for us to do as we should, to be fair, to be just, to be right, to be progressive, we need to expand that route to the medical center. Not only will it be economic development, not only would it be just and fair, but it's the right decision. It don't take a rocket science to see that the need for that particular area, this is that opportunity for growth in that area. I noticed some of the routes and everything else that everybody's come up here and made mention of, most of them are not including that medical center at this point for the co, for the amount of expansion that will take place. You have no idea how much more expansion Oklahoma would be, how much greater Oklahoma would be with that inclusion. So I'm asking you today, reconsider any action today, continue with that study, do include, do include that medical center, and it would be beneficial to all of Oklahomans. Thank you.
Thanks, Garland. Peter Roberson?
My address is 1104 Northeast Fifth Street, Oklahoma City. I do live in a JFK neighborhood. If this plan go forward, what I'd like to see is this, um, trip, railway come from downtown somewhere to the new bus depot that's gonna be built on Reno and Martin Luther King and cut through the northeast side down Eighth Street to the Health Science Center, Toby Keith, and the new place and whatever. But if, if it stays this way it is, it seems like it's running on the same line that the trolleys are running now. And if you go along with this $300 million plan that you have, it just seems to me that it'd be just a $300 million merry-go-round, 'cause it pretty much goes nowhere. In order for it to be more beneficial to everyone, it needs to go somewhere and pick up people and take them somewhere, not drive your car to it, park, and then ride around in a circle and come back to where you started. So to me, it seems like it's a plan going nowhere unless it actually goes somewhere and pick up people. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Elaine Schuster?
I am a lawyer. My office is on the 500 block on 13th, and I live off Klassen Boulevard. I've lived in Oklahoma City all my life, familiar with southeast 29th, Oilfield Row and all that. And this is a, a poorly planned, poorly designed, uh, situation in terms of future development of the city. Downtown has been working for these months, years, to develop and put together all of the structure downtown. What we, I agree with the last speaker, what we need is to go somewhere to bring more people into the whole city. It's, it's a, we're not serving, talking about serving all the population, we're not talking about the northeast development, we're not talking about the southeast development, we're not talking about the, all the outlying areas to bring in the city. We're over 600,000 miles of whatever the, the geographical area is for the city itself, for the entire metropolitan area. We're not serving that, this, when you're serving just this little area down here, you're not serving anything. I used to get to my office to the courthouse, I'm a lawyer, in five minutes. Now it takes me 15 to 20 minutes to get to the courthouse just because of all the, the Project 180 and all the other things that are going on with, with all of this. It's a, it's an economic situation that we've got to look at particularly. I've been a longtime member of the board at MetroTech. We started out when we were appointed and have been re-elected all these years. We were just talking about South Bryant. Then we bought the Spring Lake Park and turned that into our major, our principal office. And then we have seven campuses in the city. Just in terms of how our students have problems getting to the various campuses and to the various work projects, that's, this is another form of, of people. And the, we have 25,000 or more students at all times that are, and that doesn't count all the part-time people and, and the work in, in various locations and all. We just established a center down on the third floor of the Cotter Building, what used to be known as the Liberty National Bank Building. And those things are all what we are looking at in terms of economic development, and it is a, it's an essential part of the projects that we're doing at MetroTech, it's a sensible part of our, the use of our, the city and our courthouse and, and the economic development that we're looking at in terms of all areas. Oilfield Row is certainly not what it was back as I was growing up, and my dad had the machine shop and pipe yard and all that out there. But it is, it's, there are a few companies that are still there, a few companies have expanded in that area, and they have thousands of employees, and they, all of these people need to be served, not just the downtown area and the, I doubt, I have personal doubts about the, what, the, the law school making any change in terms of that. And I know that when you, you look at it, the, it's-
Elaine, you've exceeded your time by quite a bit. I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up. Thanks.
Uh, but we do ask that you, as everyone has, has Pastor Jackson and others have said, this needs to be reconsidered and looked at in terms of a whole, a whole city and not just a part of it. Thank you.
Janice Gates? Janice, I'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Janice Elizabeth Klein-Gates, and my current address for the past almost two years, next Monday, is 900 East Vandement Avenue, Apartment 142, Yukon, Oklahoma, 73099. And, um, I've heard some good things here today, and I have both sighted and blind friends who are in favor of the proposed plan. But some of the reservations that I have about it include the traffic and weather and safety hazards that Patricia mentioned earlier. And I'd like to thank the man who mentioned our need for transport or transit to outlying We do have some needs in addition to the one or two day a week things that the vans over in these areas offer. There's several of us in my complex, Nina Willingham Senior Housing, that want to continue their education and do some, um, different things in addition to the medical appointments that are top priority for one of our caravans there. But I want to thank the man who mentioned our need for transit to the outlying areas like Yukon, Moore-Norman, and Edmund, and Dell City. And I wish that people would get to know these outlying areas and even the part of Oklahoma City that is not being served. We want to be put in the loop too. Thank you.
Nancy Anderson?
My name is Nancy Anderson, 2605 Southwest 66th Street. I make my living doing research and writing. My research has convinced me that the proposed framework for this streetcar cannot fit within the budget, and the operating costs likely will run higher. There's no reason to expect any financial help from those along the route, the ones who will benefit. They have no incentive to contribute, and there's no reason to expect the large federal grants that other cities have received for their streetcars. I've explained my findings in three memos to each of you, strongly encouraging you to delay action on this proposal pending analysis of the budget as of now. It is one thing to begin a project well-informed and be surprised by cost overruns. It is entirely different to ignore warning signs at the start without stopping to take a closer look. Cities with shorter streetcars routes have to spend much more than our budget. They include Atlanta, Tucson, Cincinnati, Winston-Salem, and their operating costs exceed the estimate here. Problems with utilities under the streets on streetcar routes typically add to the costs. Here, the route goes through the oldest part of town with utilities underneath that are just as old. Problems are inevitable. One of the city's consultants has assured us they can build the proposed Phase One for the amount budgeted, 94 million, even though they project the actual cost up to 16% more than that. That consultant represents URS, which is the designer and builder of the Atlantis System. There, URS asked for a 19% increase for overruns and received 13%. We need to remember that our consultants' interests are not the same as the city's and city taxpayers'. What numbers have they compiled in their budget projections? Please, slow this down enough for city staff to take a good look at the consultant's real cost projections.
Thank you, Nancy.
Ask city staff, please. Thank you.
Deana Madoll? Good morning. Deana, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Deana Madoll. I live at 2325 North Youngs Boulevard, and I have some property at 14th and Northwest Robinson. I got interested in this route proposal in the spring and have gone to subcommittee meetings and some of the advisory board meetings. I know nothing about it at all. I, in a few days, I will start the journey of my 80th year, so perhaps I bring a little different perspective than the people who do know a lot about it. As a practicing artist, I know the value of a vibrant city, a city with lots of potential, lots of stimulation, and I think our builders and developers have made that possible. I also know the difference between need and want, and I know that it is a much better thing to want something and not get it immediately than is to need something and never get it. So I challenge you to think again about this route proposal, take a leap into something that really would be spectacular, and send this first streetcar route out into an area that needs it. This proposal can be held to the very end of your plan and still be viable and wonderful. No reason to scrap it at all. But possibly, we need to rethink, and for those of you who represent areas where need is great, I hope you will do this for your, your constituents, and that you will look at a bigger picture of what this means to the voters. Thank you.
Thanks, Deana. Mary Ann Pryor?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Mary Ann Pryor. I'm the Executive Director of Oklahoma Contemporary Arts Center. The address is 3000 General Pershing Boulevard, Oklahoma City. I'm here to speak on behalf of the proposed route because we are planning to relocate from the State Fairgrounds to 11th and Broadway Avenue. Our organization is going to be bringing a significant education and cultural entity to that part of Oklahoma City. We offer free and low-cost programs for children and adults and for our families, and we would like to see ourselves connected to downtown and other parts of Oklahoma City. One of the reasons why the land was purchased at 11th Street and Broadway Avenue was because of the connectivity and accessibility of that site, and we very much hope that we will be able to benefit from the route, but we will also bring benefit to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Jeff Bezdek?
It wouldn't be natural for me not to come with something. My name is Jeff Bezdek. My address is 1015 North Broadway, Suite 120, and I've served on the MAP Street Transit Subcommittee, and I've also served on these other committees that have been, that have been discussed earlier. I wanted to discuss where the streetcar project came from and the unprecedented public input process that we have had. There have been some comments, there's certainly been many, many suggestions by a few councilors that we have designed this route in a silo or that there is uncouth activity going on in terms of developing this project. The project origins come from the Fixed Guideway Study. And so, that started in 2005, and we've listed out the campaign, I did not count the meetings, the public meetings we had during the campaign, and then the actual Let's Talk Transit public input process, the Alternatives Analysis Meetings, the Intermodal Hub Study for Santa Fe... the Alternatives Analysis Meetings, the Intermodal Hub Study for Santa Fe Station, and then the Subcommittee Process and all the meetings that we've had this year. We have had 104 public meetings, 104. This is unprecedented in modern city history to have this level of citizen input, and I'd like to point out very strongly that during the Let's Talk Transit process, we solicited route ideas from all citizens, all citizens, and we migrated through careful counseling with our consultants to the proposal, and we're still not done because we still need more information of the route proposed to you today. I'd like to close with a few things. There's been an extraordinary amount of misinformation propagated about this project. This is supposed to be the centerpiece for the larger regional metropolitan transit system of the future. We're not just building this streetcar for the city of today, we're building it to be the centerpiece of the future commuter rail and enhanced bus system that will connect Edmund to Norman, Midwest City to downtown. And without that critical core part to pick people up and drop people off without the use of a car to the Santa Fe Hub facility, that overall system does not work. I would like to address Ward 7 in the northeast side. This Subcommittee recognizes that there are some extraordinary opportunities in terms of lesser cost solutions to serve Ward 7, and we fought as a committee before this body to have alignment study to Ward 7 because we thought that it would be a pragmatic thing to do in this system plan, because it hadn't been, it hadn't been properly studied by the Fixed Guidway Study. It really hadn't. There's an opportunity in the future to connect Remington Park, the Adventure District, all through Ward 7, 23rd Street, all the way down to the streetcar, the streetcar and the, in the core area. But you still have to have that core area. We simply don't have the funds to reach far out into Ward 7 without the base system. And regarding the Greyhound Station, that needs to go to the Intermodal Hub. That's where it needs to go.
Jeff, you're at your three.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I hope you vote for the route.
Jeff, can I ask you a question real quick? How of the, the groups that were meeting, how much minority representation is on the Subcommittee or that participated in these, these meetings?
We solicited and put out to everyone to have attendance. What has happened is transit has been elevated and there are a lot more people participating in the process than were originally involved, but since 2005, significant elements of all parts of our city were incorporated in this public process. Now, as far as the committee makeup is made up right now, there were people who applied to the mayor and the council ratified the Subcommittee memberships that we currently have, and there are 10 of us. And arguably, we're very passionate about representing the interest of the city and representing the people who voted, the people who voted for the MAPS 3 project. Now, on the Subcommittee right now, we have not had a minority member apply to be on the committee, and I think if we had had that when the committee was really formed, we would have welcomed them with open arms. Well, the slots are filled right now, but if a slot comes open and someone wants to fill it, I'm sure that you'll have the opportunity to submit an idea for someone.
Jeff, I'd like to just ask you one final question and then just put this behind us. As, you know, when I, when I went and met Mr. Gustafson, or I listened last year at Rail Evolution, and I asked him in a panel of four experts about couplets versus linear routes in cities, and the first three stood up and said, "Do not do a couplet in Oklahoma City." It doesn't, a one-way loop isn't appropriate with two-way streets, your streets are too far apart, it's not going to make sense for the pedestrian, you need to do a linear route out to a destination, concentrate development. Three people on the road said that, and then finally, Mr. Gustafson stood up and said, "Well, I like the idea of a couplet in Oklahoma City." So it occurred to me then that when we chose the consultant, we largely chose the route.
I don't agree with that.
I'm just, I understand, but what, what makes that so important to me then is the consultant selection process, and you, I, you know, you had 20 percent of the vote, we have five people that choose the consultant on this.
Three city staff members and two volunteers were appointed to that committee.
Right. And, and, and while our Transit Director and our Planning Director do not have a vote, but you and another gentleman have 40 percent of the vote on this project, and, and you made it very clear that you wanted Mr. Gustafson on the team, and that resulted in a city audit investigation.
A city audit that you filed on me.
Correct.
And you filed it on me, and I think that's also unprecedented in modern city history for you to file an audit on a volunteer, particularly after you didn't consult with me after your concerns rose. But you filed the audit on me, and I went through a extreme period of very uncomfortableness in terms of having to deal with being interrogated by the independent city auditor among other people who are volunteers, and they found nothing. They found that I did nothing wrong. Now, Counselor, you've opened this up. You've gone there, so I'd like, since you've made this personal, I'd like to say a few things. You have said so many things to the public that are not, not true, not correct, not backed up by facts, not backed up by facts. You held a transit symposium in which you gathered everyone in the room, and you railed against the streetcar, railed against the process, railed against the Committee of Volunteers. I have never seen anything like it in, in memory in terms of the acrimony that you have personally tried to subject to this process. You have tried to sabotage a majority-approved vote by the people. The people did know what they were voting on when they went to vote for the streetcar. There were scientific polls conducted by the Oklahoma Gazette and by News 9 that demonstrated that the top two projects in the overall MAPS projects was the streetcar, sidewalks, and trails. And we had a clear mandate, a very clear mandate from the broader city, the public, citywide vote, that they wanted a streetcar system. Now, I understand you're talking about linear routes versus nonlinear routes. Well, look, my opinion about streetcar and how it best works in the urban environment has changed too. It has changed. The reality is you do need a hub-and-spoke to that central looping system. You need to reach out into the community and bring people in and serve the civic institutions which make up our downtown effectively. Now, Councilman, I have distributed basically a written rebuttal because there is not enough time today in this meeting to rebuttal everything you have said to the public and to the council, which is not true. So we've, we've actually looked at all your public meetings, all the things you've said, and we've looked at the facts, and we've backed up the things that we're saying are contradictory in writing. Because I've never seen, I, I've been volunteering for this city before the streetcar project. I have been volunteering walkability issues, sidewalk issues, bus issues, and I have never seen an individual try to come in and subvert, subvert a public process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jeff, Jeff, one final question. Jeff, this, the editors at The Oklahman will not allow Mr. Lackmire to talk to our city auditor without your permission. My belief is that if you allow him to talk to our city auditor, it will immediately be evident that you've misled our city auditor. Will you allow Mr. Lackmire to tell the city auditor what he heard you speak of in terms of the route and consultant selection process?
Councilman Shadid, we had a private conversation in an elevator lobby in which, quite frankly, I don't remember exactly what all was said. What does matter is what you say in public. When you actually conduct an audit, okay, when you conduct an audit and a volunteer is cleared, when they are cleared of wrongdoing, it should end there. Thank you.
I have, I have a question about the, about the meetings thing. I, I keep hearing this story about 100 meetings. I'm not sure all those 100 meetings had to do with the streetcar. I mean, I think that's hyperbole. I probably shouldn't be the one to criticize someone else for using hyperbole, but, but, but I think that's an exaggeration about the number of meetings that had to do with the streetcar. But I'll tell you something, the last two meetings that I attended were meetings that I'm sure that are counted in this list. They were terrible meetings. They were terrible. There was no, there was no broad-based support. There were questions that weren't answered. I, I think this is a manifestation of that. We can, we can attack people individually and, and maybe make, make some headlines for doing that, but I'm not sure that's going to get us anywhere. I think the process, and I do think, I think the illustration that it was done in a silo is, is, is accurate, I think, because I haven't, I haven't seen any change. This, this system, the route we've got is, is, if you look at doing it the way we're planning on doing it today, this is the best route for that. If that's what your plan is, this is the best route. It does, it does less damage and more positive things than any other of the routes that we've looked at. There is any question about that. But is it the best route overall? The lady that talked a while ago about the idea that we serve those that want to ride or those that need to ride, the number of people that talk about that, that's, to hear me be critical of this is not anything new. I'm not, I'm not a Johnny-come-lately to the criticism of this. I was there from the beginning. I've said it over and over. I don't think anybody ought to be surprised that I'm not happy with this route. But I'm not happy for the basic reason that was, has been illustrated. This is a route to serve people that don't have to ride it. This is, this is a route to serve people that want to ride it, as opposed to the, to a route that would serve people that need to ride it. This is a route to chase economic development, not to create it. This is a route to chase ridership, not to develop it. That's my concern with it. I mean, it all boils down, but to that, but the idea that we're going to talk about 104 meetings and somehow that's indicative that the public had 104 opportunities to express themselves, I tell you, I went to the last two, and the public didn't have any opportunity to express themselves. It was so canned, it was so narrowly focused. No, you don't need to do, don't do that, don't do that. It was so narrowly focused that I think that's what's brought out the fact that we've had 13 people speak yet, and 10 of them have spoken against it. And it's because the process wasn't open like it should have been to develop a plan. The answer of, are you going to do it for those that need it, or those that want it, is still, well, the answer is you're going to do it for those that want it. The, the current plan right now, we'd be better off, everybody that wants to ride this, this piece of equipment, we'd better off giving them a, a, a pass on a taxi in terms of, but the subsidy's going to be for this city, we'd be better off handing them a free pass on a taxi and let them ride back and forth than, than they are to, to challenge the general fund to a $2.5 to $3 million deficit.
We still have some citizens to be heard from. Jill Adler?
Hello, my name is Jill Adler. My address is 21 Northeast 3rd Street, and I am a member of the Streetcar Subcommittee. But before I was a member of the Streetcar Subcommittee, I was actually a supporter of MAPS, and I attended every public meeting that has been held, including some that were attended by five people. I knew when I was voting what I was voting for. I knew I was voting for a streetcar. I knew that the route had not been delineated. I went to all the meetings where citizen input was taken, and I actually looked at all the different routes. Most of them, because we aren't engineers, we aren't route designers, didn't make a lot of sense, but all of them concentrated very closely to the area that the streetcar route now covers. I want to speak not only for myself, I want to speak for the citizens, citizens of Oklahoma City. A lot of the people who work can't be here today, and, you know, everyone talks about downtown being for the wealthy, for the, the playground of Oklahoma City, but if you look at every building downtown, there are janitors in those buildings, there are cleaning services, every hotel has laundresses, it has maids, they have bellmen, all those people have the opportunity to use the streetcar as transit. But downtown is for everyone in Oklahoma City. When I moved here 30 years ago, downtown was a wasteland. My husband called it a dump. Somebody else, I've heard all sorts of things. MAPS has been the most transformative thing I have ever seen in the history of any city, and I applaud not only the council who had the vision to, to come up with a plan where the citizens actually improve a city themselves, but the citizens who had the foresight and the enthusiasm for their city, the love for their city, to improve it also. This place, I promise you, if it weren't for MAPS, we would not have survived this last economic crisis the way we did. I firmly believe that because of what we've done downtown, the city is as economically stable as it is, and when you go downtown, when you go to the Myriad Gardens to the free concert on Sunday night, when you go to The Cage to watch basketball, which I hope everyone has done because it's some of the most amazing basketball you'll see, when you go to the river to walk, to ride a bike, when you go to Bricktown to go to the movies, when you are one of the people who gets to go to the Thunder Games, which is not only for the wealthy, they give 100 free tickets away, they're $10 tickets, a Red Hawks game. Everyone in the city has the opportunity to share in our downtown, and what the streetcar will do is allow everyone to traverse downtown easily, so someone who lives up in northwest Oklahoma City can come and park on 10th Street, they can spend the entire day, they can take their family, they can ride the streetcar. It is, it is, downtown is what ties us together and what makes us Oklahoma City, and I just want to see all the MAPS projects built as promised to give the voters what they thought they were voting for. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Alex Svetkov?
My name is Alex Svetkov. I live at 212304 South Villa, Oklahoma City, lifetime resident, rode the streetcar when the streetcars were around. One question I want to know is, what can a streetcar system do that the public bus system can't do? What can $76 million or however how much money set aside here, could it not be spent for something better than a streetcar system? You look around you, people talk about routes. If you want to change a bus system, how long does it take to change a bus route? If you want to make a streetcar change, how long would that take to make it to a route change? Only thing I can say is, you spend money like it's going out of style. Money doesn't mean anything to somebody else unless it comes out of their own pocket. Somebody's going to make some money off of the streetcar system, and evidently it's going to pass, but right now, this is a bad time. You've got an Indian museum sitting over here that needs money. Where's it going to come from? Somebody'd like to spend money, and that's right, but I'd like to keep some of mine for my old age. One of these things I'd like to do before I die is be able to drive downtown Oklahoma City without running into all kinds of obstructions when you're trying to get down the highway. If you're going to tear up something, go out in the country and tear it up where you don't have to repave it and replenish it. One more thing, of all the good things that we've heard today, nobody's mentioned the poor sound system in the building. My hearing is not good, and it's terrible when I come in here. Thank you.
John Mooneyham?
Mayor, Council, I'm John Mooneyham. I live at 732 Northwest 21st Street here in Oklahoma City, and I do support the current core railcar plan. Sure, more things need to be discussed on it, but as it stands right now, the core, extending corridors out to Phase 2 extending corridors out to Phase Two parts, like the Health Sciences Center and so forth, make perfect sense to me. Now, I have lived in Oklahoma City and Norman for 30 years plus, oh, 35, great. And, uh, I, at one point, lived in Norman without a car and took the bus with my bike to my work on, uh, the far west side of Oklahoma City. And that route would take over an hour and a half to get from Norman and make the transfer. The bus system needs tons, tons of work, and we all know that. But that's not what this was voted on. This was voted on for the rail. And, uh, oh, the, the comment about the, uh, the, uh, getting the credit for the taxi, good luck if you don't mind waiting about 45 minutes for that, too. So, this is a start. Everything has to start somewhere. This process has been rolling for a while since MAPS was voted in, and I'm not against any of the other parts of it at all, but this is where everything has to begin. Now, if, um, people are complaining because it's a loop, I've driven that loop. I think it's a pretty worthwhile adventure and it doesn't take that long. Um, I think that, uh, as the system expands, that, um, everyone, well, not everyone can be placated. You can't please everyone, but you can please a lot of people. And, uh, uh, if you want to just, uh, run a, like a central line out to somewhere, once again, I live at 732 Northwest 21st. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Steve Mason.
Thank you, Councilmen, thank you, Councilors. Um, thanks for all the work you've done on MAPS over the years. I'm a big supporter of MAPS. Um, I also serve on the MAPS Streetcar Committee, and I support the Zeta route that's being discussed today. Some of the discussion today has talked about the Health Sciences Center. Um, when we initially began, I was on the Fixed Guide Rail Study in 2005 that COPTA began, we did discuss going to the Health Sciences Center, and we did examine that. Joe Ferretti served on our committee, and he was part of those discussions when we looked at going to the Health Sciences Center. And at the end of the day, the route that was selected was the best route of the two, in considering where else to go. Um, if you remember, you know, I believe the public supports this project. When the polling was done on MAPS 3, it was in the top two projects that the citizens supported. And there's a lot talked about, should the streetcar be a placemaker or a place server? It does both. It serves existing people, existing businesses, but also it's going to be a placemaker that along the routes, there's a lot of undeveloped stuff or underdeveloped properties that would be more developed. Um, I wear a couple hats. I'm also a redevelopment builder of buildings at 10th and Broadway. This is an important project as our city grows and expands and continues to be a great major league city, and MAPS has been a big part of that. Um, I'm also a business owner. I employ about 450 employees in Oklahoma City. And I think, speaking both of us, myself as an employer and on behalf of many employers in Oklahoma City, the streetcar is important to our citizens. A vibrant urban core is important, and it's important as I recruit and retain employees. Um, finally, I, I also have a, a good fortune to serve on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. I also chair the Transportation Committee, and the chamber supports the modern streetcar. We support a lot of things in our agenda. We support buses, we support sidewalks, we support highways, and, and this is a component of a, of a well, very thought-out transportation system. So I hope you guys will support today's streetcar route. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. David Dickerson.
Morning. My name's David Dickerson. I live at 18033 Cristobal Boulevard up in far north OKC. Excuse me. It's one of those guys where the streetcar will never come to my front door. Um, it makes sense. I mean, the Fixed Guide Way Study is something that I followed literally from a plywood shack in Afghanistan when I first learned about the streetcar. I mean, if you wanted to find out about the transit plans for Oklahoma City, you could. So, um, but it comes down to this decision you have today, you've got to start somewhere, uh, because we have nothing that works outside of the core right now. And so you have to start somewhere, and this simply makes sense. It supports development, it supports ridership. It supports me, I could drive down and park in a city parking garage or somewhere and ride anywhere I want to go, just as well as it serves a person getting off at the bus transfer center. So it serves a great plurality of Oklahoma City citizens, and that's the people who voted for this system, a plurality of Oklahoma City citizens. Ward 8, Ward 2, Ward 1, I don't know how it broke down, but I think this proposal you have in front of you today is the best starting point for a future system to build on the hub and spoke that everyone talks, everyone has some great ideas, and that's some things that we should get to eventually, but you have to start somewhere. And this looks like the best starting point that I've seen. So, that's what I got to say. It'll never come to my front door, but I look forward to riding it in a few years.
David. Nathaniel Harding.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, it's been my honor to serve as the chairman of the Streetcar Subcommittee, and very proud of our process, and I've learned quite a bit about city governance, and I've had some fun, sometimes it's not quite as fun today, but, uh, the, the debate and the discussions, um, while they can often go very long, I mean, we're going to the lunch hour now, they are worth it. They're worth it to make our city a wonderful place to live. And, uh, I first, I, I first read about, um, the Fixed Guide Way Study, and on page one of the executive summary, it, it makes mention of the circulator, of the modern streetcar serving as a circulator. And it was on the shortlist of, of projects that were essential for regional transit development. And, uh, it was selected in large part, I believe, because it's, it's one that falls within a single jurisdiction, ours, and that is capital intensive, so it fits the MAPS model well. And when we did that, when we put that in MAPS, it signaled our resolve to make a paradigm shift in how we move around the city. And, and, and it, it was a testament to our ability to get things done. We put our money where our mouth is, and we said, no other city is stepping up to the plate right now, this was years ago, well, we can do this, we can make this happen in the MAPS model. And we did that, and I'm so proud of that. And I think it's going to make huge changes, uh, throughout the region, and we're already seeing that with different improvements. I've also witnessed, um, political will developing over time with this, uh, all different people from all different corners stepping up and supporting this. Um, and even hearing today that there's significant political will to go out to the OU Health Science Center and to the Adventure District Line. And so I hope you noticed on our route, uh, with MAPS money, we have a option to extend out to northeast into the Health Science Center, and we spent MAPS money to study the Adventure District Line, and I hope that's going to be considered by, by council in, in due course. We're following the model of other cities like Tampa and Tucson of jump-starting our transit improvements with streetcar, and I'm proud to be a part of that. And I think it'll kick off 20 years of growth for our city, the next 20 years of growth that we've already seen with the original MAPS. It'll create a, a key corridor of infrastructure, um, connecting downtown and with extensions, you know, going south, going northeast, and then, of course, being a multimodal system to integrate with the bus and with other forms of transportation, and I hope to see BRT to the airport and other places beyond. This has been the culmination of over 100 meetings that have related in some manner to transit and usually streetcars specifically. And, uh, you know, really, it's the beauty of city government, that people that are volunteers such ourselves, that are citizen volunteers, can even, uh, can disagree and can change their minds and say, well, at first we thought it was going to be this years ago, but with all the thorough investigation and the thousands of hours that we've all put in, myself and the other volunteers, have, have learned that, and we believe that what we're offering today is our best effort, and that we've been tasked with being thorough, and I think we have dutifully executed that. We've done it without any pretense or without playing politics.
Nathaniel, you've run your three minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time, and as I say, this, I believe this is our very best effort, and I'm very proud to say it. Thank you.
Let me make a comment before you leave. I, I want to tell you, I, I appreciate your comment about reasonable people can disagree, and that, that's the way I feel about this today. I think you've done a great job. I think this, I think the people that are on the committee have done a good job. And I don't, I don't, this is not a criticism of that. It is, it's a, it's a fundamental political discussion about whether you serve those that need it or whether that you serve those that want it, as far as I'm concerned. That doesn't mean if you're on the one side and I'm on the other that I think you're a bad person, because I frankly believe that this is going to pass today, and I'm going to do everything I can do to make it successful, because I'm very much in fear that if it's not successful, it may have, it may severely damage the MAPS brand as it's going forward. So I'm going to be supportive of it after today, even, but I, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to give in to that because I don't think it's the right, I don't think it's the right route. I mean, that's, that's my point. And I want to let you know, you came and talked to me, I appreciated the conversation, we had a good conversation, we ended up agreeing to disagree, but that, that, that's not what this is about, that disagreement. That disagreement is just about a fundamental political difference that determines where the city's going to spend its resources.
And I might, might add to that, that, uh, I believe that with all the, what, what appears like disagreement, I think we have a shared vision. This all started years ago when people said we need to improve transit, all the modes of transportation. And I believe, even though you hear people saying very different things, you know, you or I even perhaps, that we have, we have a shared dream, we all want to get to the same place. I think if we mapped out what transit looks like in 2050, probably look exactly the same in terms of the modes and how they reach and how they interact. Um, and I believe that it starts now, and I believe that with this capital influx, this is the part that hurts. This is the part where you spend that money and you have to do it because you said we would do it, and it hurts and it's kind of scary, but I think now is the time.
Thanks, Nat.
And any other questions? Oh, sorry.
Pete said a lot of things that I, that's been rolling around in my head, so I think this is probably a good time for me to chime in, because, you know, I, I met with you and we've talked and, you know, uh, I really, really appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I mean, there is no, the, the, because I've done none, you know? I've, I've done, I've done no work on this, on this job. I've only observed what's, what all's been going on and observed, uh, the, um, the project as a whole. And so, but I just think it's a bad idea. I just, I just think it's a bad idea, and I know that what's on our, what's on our agenda is the route. Um, but, you know, when, when I look, when I look at this project 20 years out, 30 years out, 40 years out, I think it's something we're going to look back on and really, really regret. And I don't, and I believe I was elected to make common sense decisions, uh, based on my convictions and what I feel like the overall sentiment of Ward 1 is. And, uh, so I've just tried to stay, keep a, a bird's eye view, a big picture view, and not get muddled in the, in all the details, that a, a lot of details have been, have been talked about today. And so I think that what the proponents of this, this project say are going to happen aren't going to happen, which is why I think it's a bad idea. If we go forward with it and we do it, I want those things to happen. I definitely, I don't, I'm not one of those guys that wants to be right at all expense and, and, you know, oh, you know, 20 years down the road, see, I told you, the streetcar was a dumb idea. So that is really my, uh, my view of the whole thing, and I just, and, uh, Pete said something about damaging the MAPS brand, and I, I, I see this as one of those projects that could really damage the MAPS brand. The MAPS, you know, there's been a lot of work done on MAPS in the old, there's a lot of been things that said really positively about MAPS, which is extremely, extremely true, and I completely agree with him. Uh, but this is one of those projects that I think could seriously damage that, uh, going down the road, and I don't want that to happen. Um, and so, so that, that's really, um, you know, the route is pretty much a moot point to me. And I, and I've, I've said that numerous times, but I had never said it here, and so I wanted to, uh, put that all out, so everybody knows where I stand. Thanks, Nat.
I think, you know, I'd just like to echo Pete's comments to you and, and just tell you that I think you've done a fantastic job as a spokesman, and we, we haven't agreed on everything. And I'm with Pete, it's ultimately, we're all trying to get to the same place. I've never heard anybody say a negative thing about you. I've only heard people say positive things about your leadership and being a spokesman, and I think the streetcar project benefits from having you be the spokesperson. I would caution that my best educated guess at this time is that there's a sizable majority of the population that is opposed to the streetcar, to the downtown streetcar. And I think that when you ask those same people, summarize in a paragraph the arguments that have been, been made here for and against, that opposition increases. And so we have to be careful not to be misled by Gazette polls from four years ago in which only 1.5% of the people were over 65. And if there's fear, from myself and I think Pete, it's that we want things in the future like commuter rail, like connecting our city to our military base at Tinker and, and Edmund, and we want things to happen. And if we don't do this right, there is a risk that the public will turn on transit projects and turn on commuter rail. And so I want you to know that we may disagree, but, but it's the fear, we're all trying to get to the same place. I also will oppose this route, but after today, I will be with Pete and I will try and get the best product that we can get. I will go to Seattle to the rail evolution. I understand our Larry Hopper is on two panels out there, and I will, I will join the fight, but, but we'll oppose today for those reasons.
I think, um, if I might kind of respond to those comments.
Good, briefly, Nathaniel.
One of the reasons that this project gets so much attention is that, much like the cornerstone project of MAPS 1, the canal, it changes the face and the structure and the feel of our city so much. Uh, you'll be able to see it wherever you are, you know, in, in downtown. Um, it literally physically changes how we, how we move around and how things look. Um, and that's a big step, but I think, just like the canal was, I think we'll look back on it and say, man, that must have been a no-brainer a generation ago when they all made that decision. Um, and I think it's the cornerstone piece of MAPS 3, and that can be, that can be intimidating because there's, there's uncertainty, but I think we'll be very proud that we did it.
All right. Thank you. Chad Reynolds.
Mayor, Council, my name is Chad Reynolds. I live at 423 Northwest 20th Street, and, uh, I'm here to represent, uh, my family, which owns a building at 1230 North Robinson. It's the old Bolin Oldsmobile Building. That's where we have our place of business, been there since 1993. Uh, before that, it was at Central Park up on Lincoln Boulevard, but we came here in 1993 before there was MAPS. Well, I guess that was the year that MAPS was first voted on. It was very exciting. Um, we're, and we weathered the storm through the bombing and have seen the area really come alive, and it's pretty exciting. So I want to say that we support, as property owners, the, the current route that goes up, that goes up Robinson and Broadway and over to Midtown. Just want to say a few things quickly. I'm not sure what has been debated today, because there's been a lot of rhetoric that I'd like to just address briefly. People have assailed the process, saying that the details before the MAPS 19, uh, the MAPS 3 vote in 2009 changed after the vote. Well, Nat just brought up the, the canal. Well, I remember the canal was going to take a different route prior to the vote in 1993. Subsequently, it changed. The, the baseball park was going to be in a different location, the library was going to be in a different location. These things change as committees meet and make determinations based on changing realities. People have assailed the route. They say it's not inclusive enough, though we have created areas where it can be expanded. People have also assailed the costs at the same time that they assail the route. If you expand the route, you increase the cost. I think it was pretty clear when we voted in, in 2009 on this, that it was for a downtown streetcar, and that we only had a limited amount of money to spend on that downtown streetcar. So I think some issues are getting muddled together, and I certainly do appreciate people looking at the process, but the process has been clear. The route was predetermined, it was going to be downtown, generally downtown. Well, I consider myself working in downtown. I, I work at 12th and Robinson. I walk downtown or I ride my bike rarely because I wear a suit. I'm really excited about hopping on a streetcar, and one final, one final thing, people have said it's not inclusive. Like Mr. Mason, who employs hundreds of people, they reside all over the city, uh, our company has 60 people that work at 1230 North Robinson. They don't all, like me, live in Heritage Hills. They live in Yukon, they live in Mustang, they live in Edmund, they live in Norman, they live in Midwest City and Dell City and more. We had a, an employee lose her house in the tornado. They come to work downtown because it's seen as a vibrant place that connects everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marian Hutchinson.
Marion Hutchinson, 5220 Montrose Circle, Norman, Oklahoma, Mayor and Council. I guess first, I just want to thank everyone on the council that's been involved in the efforts on this project and helping to move Oklahoma City forward toward what we're all striving for, which is a comprehensive regional transit system. I don't think anybody disputes that's where we all want to go. And I think this modern streetcar project and the intermodal hub project are going to help compel us and move us that way, and I think they're going to be very beneficial in the long run. And I also want to congratulate council, especially Councilmember White and former Councilmember Bowman, on helping us get to the point with the hub that we actually secured the federal tiger grant. I think that's incredible, and it's another thing that's going to move us forward. Especially want to thank the subcommittee, and while I've been involved heavily in all these issues and seems like on a daily basis for the last three to five years, I'm not on the committee, and I've never seen such a dedicated group of citizens so committed to trying to get this right. And it's a difficult decision, and I just have to applaud them. It wasn't easy. Today, you've got the opportunity to move us one step closer to building what's essentially the first new rail transit system in this state in more than six decades. And this is an important step that gets lost, it's like you can't see the forest through the trees. And in a few short years, thanks to the hub study, thanks to the funding from the federal tiger grant, we're actually going to have the first truly multimodal and intermodal system beginning with the streetcar connecting to the bus transfer center, to Santa Fe Station with Amtrak service. I mean, this is something that we should all really be encouraged about. I've been here previously as president of OnTrak, a citizens' organization that supports rail transit initiatives in the state, to support the hub site selection, and I just wanted to let you know that our board has voted unanimously to approve this route and to move forward on the project. We believe it will provide improved and valuable transit for those who live, work, and visit the greater downtown area in the short term, and in the long term will effectively serve the core as the circulator, as the critical centerpiece component for the last-mile regional transit system that we're all working towards. I've sat and kind of served my kind of purpose the last three years through this process is to kind of observe and ensure that the hub study and the streetcar project and the routing actually serves that greater purpose. I live in Norman. I'm not hardly going to ever ride the thing. I want it to work for the future. It's got to do both. It has to be, provide effective local ridership and serve the local residential and workers downtown, and it's got to connect to the hub, and it's got to provide that future system service, or nobody's going to ever ride the future system if it's not set up right.
Marion, you're at your comment.
Okay. Anyway, I do appreciate all your support and your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, comments from council, I have several that you have not been heard from if you'd like to be. Yeah, Pat?
A couple of comments, Your Honor. Is there a representative from St. Anthony's Hospital here? I want to represent the hospital, but I will say something. A couple of years ago, I had association with St. Anthony's Hospital, and there were two constituencies up there that really looked forward to developing some kind of reliable transportation between the hospital and the downtown. And these are the workers who worked there, who arrived by bus and they couldn't get the final step between downtown and the hospital. And then the people who had friends and relatives in the hospital that were there who needed a place to stay while their friends or relations were being taken care of. There was no good alternative to, around the hospital to stay. There were some motels that had passed their prime, and they were not really a good choice. There were a lot of hotels being built in Bricktown that would have provided an opportunity for these people to stay in town if they had a good solid transportation. And I think, I would take a little bit of exception to Councilman White's argument, this is for people who want it, not need it. There are some people who would use it, I think, out of need rather than just because it was there. But having that, I agree that we can agree to disagree in this particular instance. And I want to say one other thing, and that is, nothing to do with streetcars, it has to do with road replacement in Ward 8. We need to be careful as we do these projects in Ward 8 that we don't take out too many roads at one time to deny our citizens the right to get from one place to another by virtue of the construction up there. And I think we need a little bit better coordination on those projects. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Pat. John, David, Larry? Larry, go ahead. Larry and then David.
I am 100% in favor of moving forward with a downtown streetcar. My vision is shared by many, many folks in central Oklahoma, I believe, not everybody, and that is that at some time, long after I'm gone, in a few years when this materializes, I'm going to be in heaven where we're going to have streets of gold, we're not going to have trowels going around, we're not going to have potholes, and I'll be looking down on you all who are left down here. And I think that what I will see is a regional transportation system that includes high-speed rail, commuter rail, includes fast bus rapid transit, includes an expanded bus system, still has the option for automobiles, and will have as one of its key components, a downtown streetcar as one of the things that got it started. A journey of 1,000 miles starts with one step. We have the ability to take that step with a downtown streetcar. We don't have that ability today to take that step with high-speed rail or with commuter rail. Their day will come. And just to show you what can happen in the vision, as I was sitting here listening and the Health Sciences Center has as an option in the expansion of this first phase, the money allocated that we can select to extend this to the Health Sciences Center. But right today, we have the option of extending it to St. Anthony Hospital, and is a very interesting thing in our package today dealing with the Midtown redevelopment, all right? I think I can say this pretty certain, that had St. Anthony Hospital not elected to stay in the location that they are in, we wouldn't be talking about this, we wouldn't be talking about where a streetcar would or would not go. We'd be trying to figure out what to do with a desert land that would be left there had St. Anthony pulled out. We don't know the full impact of what this decision right now will be, but I believe that if we vote to move forward with a downtown streetcar, generations to come, instead of criticizing us and saying, "Man, you guys were fools," we'll say, "Those guys were visionaries." Thank you, Your Honor.
David? Thank you, Your Honor. I think I fall in the category of not being a proponent or in opposition to the streetcar, but the way I look at it is, it was a part of the MAPS 3 vote. The vote passed, so we've got to proceed with the streetcar. So now we're looking at the route, and I think all nine of us could come up with our own preference for a route, and I don't think that creates a problem necessary. This is the one that was presented to us. I do have a concern, and I do want to clarify this in public. As I've talked with David Todd, who's overall MAPS 3 as well as Eric Winger, I've been told that this is, you know, and this is the part we need to clarify, this is a framework for the route. This is what the intentions are, but it's not necessarily set in stone. And this leads me to the point that I'm most concerned about is, during Project 180, we encountered significant problems, especially along Robinson Avenue, as we were encountering various utility lines as well as the vaults that lay underneath the streets. I think we need to consider the cost of this route as it relates to the construction of the rail, and what I've been told is that as we go forward with this, we'll have further analysis performed. And to me, it does make a difference if this route costs 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, maybe $10 million more than an alternative that maybe is one block east or west, or two blocks east or west, or a block further south or further north. That's what we need to take into consideration as we move forward, and whether or not it's a cost that the city would incur or a cost that the utilities would incur, we still have to take that into consideration before we finalize the route. Just because the city wouldn't necessarily have to pay for the relocation of utilities or these vaults, ultimately, the ratepayers of the utilities would have to pay for it. And I think we have an obligation to build this route in the most cost-effective way as possible, and I've just not seen an analysis or a study performed that says this proposed route is the most cost-efficient one. So as I'm not in opposition of this proposed route, it's my understanding that, again, this route is not set in stone, and as we go further, if we find that there are unforeseen difficulties in laying down the track, that we would always have the option, again, to move it over a block or two east or west. So that's the point I wanted to bring forth. I, too, would love to see a line going out to the Health Science Center, and I do think, as it's been mentioned before, that this is just a starting point, and I'm sure, let me say this, I believe that the first offshoot from this route will be to connect the Health Science Center to downtown Oklahoma City. It just makes sense. I would love to see us do something similar to connect Capitol Hill as well as stockyards to the downtown area, and eventually, maybe not a streetcar, but some type of rail system that would provide transportation between downtown and the airport. I think that's certainly needed, but it's not a part of our question today. So I'm, again, I'm not a proponent of the streetcar. I don't anticipate using it that much. I'm not in opposition of it. I think we've got to move forward as part of MAPS 3. And I couldn't really tell you if this route is better than, you know, any of the others that have been looked at, but again, this is the one that's been proposed to us by the subcommittee, and I think we need to respect the work that they've put into this. Thank you.
I want to just speak, I feel like we're coming near the end of this conversation. I want to, first of all, thank the citizens who came down here today, and of course, the citizens that in 2009 funded MAPS 3, which included the streetcar. I want to thank the city staff that has spent many, many hours on this, the citizen subcommittee and the citizen advisory board that has held numerous public meetings, and of course, the consultants that guided us through these difficult times. There are several steps in the advent of a project like this. Most critical are the day it gets funded, and perhaps secondly is the day it gets routed because these are controversial decisions that we know are going to affect generations to come, and I think everyone in the room can admit that whether or not we have all agreed, we have taken this matter very, very seriously, and I want to appreciate the attention that this matter has been given. I feel like we're close to a vote. Ed, you want to say something?
Just, well, I think one of the most important areas that we're an outlier, we really haven't touched on this morning, and I just, before the vote, would express this one apprehension, and especially before the meeting on Thursday with the Health Science Center and the developers. When I listened to Mr. Gustafson address, lecture the audience last year in Los Angeles, he indicated that the primary use, primary purpose of a streetcar is not as a transit vehicle, but as a city shaping tool. You work in concert with developers to change the way your city is built and functions. People look at the 12-story buildings in Portland and think that the streetcar was there and then the buildings came. It was a partnership between the city and the developers. It was a 70-acre empty lot, 40 acres of which was owned by one entity, the Hoyt Street Properties. And the city wanted something. The city wanted affordable housing because they realized that the Achilles' heel of new urbanism, which I and so many people have come to love, is gentrification, and that you start to build an area that only the wealthiest among us can afford. And so what they did is they did a deal where the city removed an overhead ramp and it completed a park, and it made the streetcar alignment go closer to certain property developers, but then the developers did something for the city. And by 2006, when there were 5,000 housing units, 1,000 or 20% of them were affordable housing, and everybody won. And that, I think, is the missed opportunity in this route selection process. And six, seven months ago, four of us on the council asked for Mr. Gustafson to be able to go and talk to developers and negotiate for them to, either a special assessment district, business, something to help get some of the money, help for operations, looking to what Jeff Speck has guided everybody. This book, Welcome City, is on track to be the most popular bestselling urban planning book of all time, and he says it the best. Portland's streetcar succeeded as a tool for increasing urban vibrancy because it was first a tool for neighborhood development. This fact is important for two reasons. First, it's because it's a mistake. It is a mistake to promote a streetcar in the absence of a major real estate opportunity. And second, because such an opportunity suggests the presence of private parties who stand to benefit tremendously from the investment, and these parties should want to help pay for it. And we never even asked if anybody would help pay for the operations. We never even asked the question if anybody would help us with things like affordable housing, or we bring the streetcar to Bricktown and all these surface parking lots that need something to be done. We never asked anything. But four of us on the council did ask that that be done six months ago, and we were surprised six weeks ago when Mr. Gustafson presented the routes, and we said, "Did anybody ask, did you talk to any property owners?" And he said, "No." And we said, "Did anybody from the city ask you to ask them?" And he said, "No." And so we've been going the last six months thinking that these negotiations are ongoing when in reality, no negotiations were going on at all. And I have to say, Jim, I don't think that's acceptable anymore. I don't, I think if four of us who set policy indicate in these private meetings in the back that we want negotiations or we want the consultants to do something, if you don't want that done, or the other five don't want that done, then just let us know. But to let us drift along for six months and think that negotiations are going on with developers and they're really not, is not acceptable to me.
Kathy, could you step up? There has been some meetings that have gone on in regard to that.
The meetings, alliance, we learned that the Alliance for Economic Development was going to get involved after we learned from Mr. Gustafson that he had not been negotiating with the developers. We expressed our disappointment in that background, and then learned at the next streetcar subcommittee meeting that the alliance was now negotiating with property owners. Why we would vote today on a route without hearing anything until, I guess, right now of what the Alliance for Economic Development has found in negotiating with property owners is very confusing to me.
We were asked a few months ago to begin discussions with property owners along the proposed route, and at the time, the Zeta Route wasn't completely selected, so we had to make a general assumption about what the route might be in order to identify property owners who might be impacted. But we were asked to talk to them about the creation of a business improvement district for the funding of the maintenance and operations associated with the streetcar. We've had several meetings so far. There are still more scheduled and more to come in the future, where we sat down with property owners and talked with them about how a business improvement district could be created. We worked with downtown Oklahoma City and the staff at DOKC to even go so far as to create a conceptual bid district so that we could begin to understand the financial implications for property owners along the route. It's an important consideration that they understand how the assessments on their property to support streetcar would compare to the assessments that they're paying right now, for example, in the downtown business improvement district. So we've had several of those meetings. I will say the property owners have been very supportive of the route and very supportive of the idea of having to pay for at least a part of the maintenance. They all compared it to the discussions and the negotiations that went on when the canal was constructed in Bricktown, where we negotiated a level of participation by the property owners along the canal for canal maintenance in the original business improvement district. So they believed that a precedent had been set in that original business improvement district discussion for them to participate in a business improvement district. So they have all been supportive of the idea. Do they want to pay for all of the maintenance? No, they don't want to pay for all of it. They believe that there's a broader community They believe that there's a broader community benefit than just the benefit that accrues to their property for a streetcar system. Would they like to negotiate it and set an amount and have more discussions in the future? Absolutely. But they are generally supportive.
Aren't we like the teenager who mows somebody's yard and then knocks on the door and asks to be paid? I mean, don't you negotiate before you make them, you wildly increase their property values? What we asked, what four of us asked six, seven months ago, is that we just want this to be a variable in the route selection, not the variable. But if you have property owners on one street who are willing to pay for the operations, and you have, on another street, they're not willing, then that should be a variable. And the fact is that when Mr. Gustafson presented these four routes, none of that. That was not a variable whatsoever. And that's the policy, that is the policy that was expressed by four of us many, many months ago.
Okay. Do you think that if we approved the route today, that we'll still have some leverage on trying to get, do you think that, I mean, in your honest opinion, do you think we would...
Yes, I do, I do. I think, and there's a couple of, there's a couple of ways that we still have leverage. And, okay, the first discussion that I was having with property owners was about a business improvement district for operations and maintenance. The other, the other tool that we still have is that most of these properties, or all of them, are in the tax increment financing district that is the downtown TIF district. As properties come forward to be developed, and they request TIF assistance, we can put additional requirements on them, or negotiate over TIF assistance if they increase density, have affordability components, whatever those broader public policy issues that you would like to see us address through TIF, we can certainly address those. And I think TIF gives us a way of leveraging them to make those kinds of developments. And as we look for expansion routes, we certainly have that leverage, because both of the expansion areas could be in a TIF district.
We also have not cited any stops at this point in time, and deciding those stops could be important there. If you recall some of those early discussions, we, you asked Mr. Gustafson if it would be appropriate for the, for this, and his response was, "Not for the first one." He said, "Generally, that's, you got to approve the modern streetcar." That being said, we did go ahead and have meetings. I understand we didn't do it as quickly as you would have liked to, but we did go ahead and have meetings with some property owners, and there's some progress there. It's, I think, very similar to the meetings that we had with the property owners before and after the canal was constructed to get the operating costs established there. Those were not put into place until after the canal was actually opened, I believe.
Yeah, that's true.
Pete? Just a couple of things. One is, Kathy, I hope so much that we're able to do that. I think without those, that kind of funding, we're going to put the general fund budget in a terrible bind if we can't get some kind of funding. And there's a good reason for that. You know, we passed the health, I mean, the public safety sales tax in 1989, and 1990, 91, we've ramped up substantially the number of employees, public safety employees. If you do your math on that, all those employees have been here more than 25, 20 years now. Many of them are close to the 25-year mark. We're going to face a larger group of retirees from our public safety things in the next three or four years than we've seen in the past, I believe. And our capacity to fill those slots by using, making two classes a year is limited. So we're, there's going to be an expense there that is coming up. It's a bubble out there. And I know Jim hasn't, this is not new to him, but that bubble is out there. And we're going to have to find a way to burst that bubble financially. And so I think it's critical that the things like we're talking about here are done going forward, because otherwise, we could really end up with a self-made catastrophe with regard to the financing. The second thing, just one, I said that, too, just one more. Today is a perfect example of what my experience has been. We had, today, we had 21 speakers speak today, 21 people. 11 of them spoke against it, and 10 of them spoke for it. Of the ones that spoke for it, eight of them either were on the committee, or own property, or both. Two of them did not. They were citizens, and I appreciate that. Two people came up, and they were on property, or they weren't on the committee. My experience has been, in the last three years, the only people that have talked to me about voting for this, and it could be because I've made my position open, apparent early on, but over the last three years, the people that have talked to me about this project have uniformly been opposed to this unless they were on the committee or had a vested ownership interest in it, with the exception of two. Now, that's over a three-year period. Now, I recognize I represent a ward that didn't vote for this. I represent a ward that's never going to have a line to it, and so, to some extent, my constituency is colored by that. I understand that. But I, but I, my word hasn't always been the same shape that it is now. I've been here long enough, I've represented three different areas, and the result has been that a lot of those people, when I think about what people knew before they voted, well, I've represented three different areas in South Oklahoma City, and most, and the people that I represented first 20-plus years ago, many of them think I still represent. So the knowledge that the voters have is kind of limited as you, as you go forward. I'm saying that I'm voting my conscience, but I'm also voting the conscience of every one, with the exception of two people, two, in three and a half years. Both of them are good friends. One of them's Marion Hudson, and the other one is another friend of mine. But everyone else, to a person, everyone else that's spoken to me in favor of this has either owned property, been on the committee, or both. Now, if you think that that doesn't get through to you after a while, after three years, that kind of conversation does get through to you. I want to, but I want to close by saying, I have every hope that after this vote today, that we can go forward and make this work, because, as I said earlier, we don't have a choice. We must make it work. It's such a gigantic expenditure, and it has the huge O and M potential sticking out there that I'm not sure how we're going to fund. We have got to all be pulling on the same rope after today and make this work.
Thanks, Pete. How about a motion? John, it's partly in Ward 7. You want to make the motion, Dan?
I'm in favor.
Let the record show it, pass is 5-3. Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, that's, that's the case. We're nice here in Oklahoma.
Yeah.
step outside, please? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. But we have some business to attend to here.
Okay, we're on 6:00.
8:00. And Kathy, I understand you have a presentation on this particular issue. This is the Urban Renewal District in Midtown.
We do. We have a presentation this morning about the Midtown Urban Renewal Plan that the Urban Renewal Authority has been working on for several months to update and restate the once, what, once was called the North Downtown Urban Renewal Plan. We've renamed it as a part of this amendment process. The North Downtown Urban Renewal Plan was originally adopted in 1998 in response to the bombing of the Alfred P. Murrah Federal Building. It was felt that urban renewal was an important tool to be used in the redevelopment of the area. The plan was then later amended to address the concerns about the relocation of St. Anthony's Hospital out of the Midtown area. The authority has been working with the city planning department, staff from the Alliance for Economic Development, and consultants to prepare this update of the plan. Some of you, I know, have already been briefed about this, so we're going to try to go through this presentation quickly. It has been approved by the Urban Renewal Authority and the Planning Commission, and has been presented to the Downtown Design Review Committee. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Hans Bootser with Bootser Gardner Architects, who assisted the authority in the preparation of the plan.
Thank you very much, Kathy, and thank you very much, Council. My name is Hans Bootser, Bootser Gardner Architects. As Kathy mentioned, you know, we have been at this for a little bit, in terms of time. The plan that you have in front of you represents also something that, from an urban renewal point of view, is quite significant. This is arguably the most inclusive process that the Urban Renewal Authority has led. The report is built up from public meetings, from stakeholder input. A number of different design professionals have come together, consultations between Urban Renewal Authority, the city, Oklahoma City, and so forth, to put together a proposal that seeks to ensure that guidelines and vision are in place that make Midtown a safer place to continue developing. We have looked at the fact that the Oklahoma City University Law School is moving in. That's going to bring an influx of, influx of many students, many will be wanting to walk around in this neighborhood, so the issue of safety continues to be heightened. We are seeing continued interest in development of many different types of ownership type and rental types in Midtown area. Again, the more people we see out on the street, the greater the need for safety and so forth. So so much of our recommendation is about enhancing this measure of dance, density through public improvements. Primarily, we're focused on improvements to the right-of-way. This is about how can the public sector be a better partner in furthering safer and more pedestrian-oriented private development. Appended to this document is a set of form-based codes. Our office is a leader in proposing and promoting form-based codes. We are a big believer that the public sector is not in the best position to tell the private sector how to develop, but rather, our greater interest should be in how we develop the public realm. How do we shape the public realm the right-of-way to make it more pedestrian-friendly, to make it more user-friendly, and to make it a more vibrant place to live, work, and play? I'd like to also point out that this report, like any good planning document, seeks to engage the issue of transportation, public transportation, so forth, at many different levels, understanding how it can, again, promote safety and smarter development in the area. And as such, we look at issues of car traffic, pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, streetcar, and so forth, in how these enhancements to the public realm can be further advanced. We've had great meetings with the city planning department, great meetings with the Office of Public Works, working on ensuring that they are supportive of our objectives, and also encouraging us to effectively create a roadmap for them moving forward with this plan. I'd like to now focus up on the screen, or on your monitors there, the boundaries for the plan. On the south, your 4th Street. On the north, 13th Street. On the east, Santa Fe Rail Line. And on the west, Classen. You see also the marking of various districts and so forth. We had many meetings with many representatives of those various districts, as well, again, as with public meetings and so forth. The objectives of the plan, again, to solidify development and to ensure that the public right-of-way is as safe as possible, and that we also place a lot of focus on FAR proposals, floor area ratios, enhancing density. Again, this is about not telling developers what to do, but rather encouraging them to set goals that promote a better public realm, a better public right-of-way. The back half of the document is loaded up with a lot of the analysis that went into the conclusions. I'll focus just simply here on a number of those ranges here, recommendations for FAR. We believe that there is already a lot of good density going on, but there is certainly potential for heightened density throughout the area. What we did is look at a total of 22 catalytic sites, all of them located in places that we think need a little bit more focus or encouragement, if you will. These are sites that are at least a quarter of a block in size, things that, if they were to be leveraged, could actually really contribute to the momentum that is building in the area, and to contribute to filling out those areas that are still vastly underdeveloped so that we, again, can promote more safety and so forth. The section on catalytic sites is not anything to require of a developer, rather as a way to encourage, to paint a picture for a developer, to help them recognize the fuller potential of their properties. We also show them images of potential precedent studies that might help them in further visioning their area, their sites. We looked at parking in a very comprehensive way. There's a lot of street frontage throughout the area that doesn't have any striping. We think just simply through cans of paint that we can formalize and help people realize, and encourage them. Once you see that striped parking spot there, street parking, you're much more likely to use it. So again, our recommendations of this order, you could argue are low-hanging fruit, if you will, but they're things worth doing, and they're very cost-effective and great ways of promoting that kind of safety and usability of the area. We are looking at recommendations of how to improve the right-of-way as it exists today. We said we accept the curb cuts as they are. How could the streets be restriped, rezoned, so that we have a more appropriate use of various modes of transportation, whether it's bicycle, buses, streetcars, and cars? So again, these are, it's really more about how you restripe existing right-of-ways as opposed to rebuilding them. We looked at the issue of structured parking. There are many opportunities, if the conditions are good, for public and private projects where structured parking placed in the right way could further spur development, especially those of these catalytic sites that we outline. We believe there's a lot of value in formalizing... We believe there's a lot of value in formalizing the street furnishings to further reinforce a sense of identity. A great example of this is Project 180, further strengthening of the identity of this district in Midtown. We believe we'll go far in bolstering a sense of quality of investment and make it that much more attractive. One thing that is critical to our recommendation is to recognize that there are certain policies in place that are simply not being enacted. Specifically, there are so many parking lots in Midtown that have multiple ingress and egress opportunities, not to mention alleys that give a lot of access to these parking lots. And so, we make a strong recommendation that the number of access points into these parking lots be reduced, so that with fewer curb cuts, you're making a safer way or path for pedestrians to walk. You make it safer for bicyclists to drive, and you increase the number of street parking opportunities. So, again, this is one of these win-win-win things that costs little if no money. It's simply implementing existing ordinances that are in place. We looked at the Classen extension. Several years ago, there was a recommendation for extending the Classen diagonal straight through existing blocks, perfectly developable blocks. We think the bifurcation of so many of these would greatly undermine the value and potential of those blocks. As such, we recommend that the funding that is currently in place be used a little bit differently, as you see here with this stepping pattern, to further manifest the extension of the Classen diagonal. All of this could be used in the right-of-way through re-striping, new improved sidewalks, street planning, and potential promotion of artwork to further extend that Classen trajectory all the way through to Broadway. We also took the opportunity to take advantage of something that we see increasingly implemented successfully throughout the country, and that is the idea of a bicycle boulevard. As I stated before, we're looking at multiple modes of transportation. While there are biking lanes currently striped in various streets, we believe that Harvey, which has a very, very low traffic count, yet has a very dynamic and richly potential-filled adjacency to so many historic neighborhoods, as well as so many civic amenities along its route. You can see in the document here, all those little dots are great things that are worth biking to, and we'd like to think that, again, this is something that the public could implement starting tomorrow. The public sector could follow up on with some very basic traffic control methods that we've outlined in the plan. That would make the bicycle-riding along Harvey even safer and make it even more popular. We also looked at the streetcar as a tool for, as we've heard earlier today, city shaping and city-serving. Our recommendations were based solely on what we thought was best for Midtown, as that was our scope. We did a lot of research regarding how easily leveraged certain properties could be. All of the research that we prepared as part of our work, we shared with the MAPS Streetcar Team in their own work. Again, we only made recommendations specifically showing how redevelopment in Midtown could be further re-enhanced. And lastly, one of the key things that we looked at here was looking at green space, open space. There are a number of public spaces that are already out there that we think will continue to promote redevelopment. We also think there could be improvements to existing green spaces that are out there that would further solidify a sense of neighborhood and identity. Of course, you have the Oklahoma City National Memorial, which has always been open 24 hours. The federal, new federal buildings park, we see great shifts in the ownership there and their attitude, especially through H&amp;Eighth, and how inclusive and how community-oriented that park has quickly become, just in the last two years. And certainly Red Andrews Park, for which we have made some important recommendations. We met with the Parks Department, proposing a phased plan to allow that park not only to continue operating as a regional destination, but to start serving, surprisingly, hopefully soon enough, as a community park. It has a great location that connects across Chertel. The potential is rich for it to be leveraged, not just, again, as a regional, but also as a neighborhood park. And certainly, we made recommendations for a dog park, which we hear is now actually being implemented. So, with that, I close with phasing plans, much prepared at the urging of Public Works, to show how a lot of these recommendations that are very straightforward, very common-sense, how the public sector can further reinforce private redevelopment and also promoting a safer, healthier Midtown. With that, I give way to any questions.
Are there any questions, comments?
Just a comment, Pat, if I could. I really, I'm sorry. A comment about the process. I really, I had the privilege of attending a couple of the community meetings. They were incredibly well-attended. I think everybody felt like you got great feedback and folded that commentary into this plan, and I think it's really an exciting opportunity. And I'd like to hope we could take the work you've done here and maybe apply that going forward to some of our other neighborhoods that would really benefit from this kind of thought process of how do we create catalysts for additional development. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, I have one, Hans. Congratulations, it was a great plan.
Thank you.
But I'm not sure I understand exactly why it was done, because the private sector is so active in that neighborhood now, redeveloping things. There's some helpful ideas in here, I'll agree to that, but it seems like to characterize it as an urban redevelopment plan went too far, because we have, in my mind, the urban renewal projects have always been a catalyst. Once the private sector gets involved, we sort of step back, let them put what the public wants in. Now, it may not always be the best solution from a long-range planning standpoint, but it's what the public wants and they're willing to pay for. And so, I just, I wonder, you know, if this was not an example of maybe an overkill? There's some great ideas in here, there's things we ought to pursue, but to define it as an urban renewal plan for this area, I think maybe we've gone too far. But that's just the opinion.
If I may respond, so many of the recommendations here are really there to recognize that there are great things already occurring, and the more we bring people in, the greater there will be a demand or a need for enhancing a sense of safety. And much of this plan is really focused on safety, getting basically what Jane Jacobs will call eyes on the park, eyes on the street. It's there to really ensure that development can continue, and that we see the public sector doing the small things to ensure a safe, further redevelopment.
Good. Well, thank you very much, your plan. I didn't mean to criticize your plan, it was a great plan. I just was curious as to why we were doing it now. We should have done it 20 years ago, bigger.
Can I ask a question? Are you familiar with the ITE's Green Handbook on Designing Urban?
Very much, it's a staple in my teaching.
Great. So, how much of that was incorporated into this?
We use the ITE standards, which were, as you know, built up in concert with the Congress for New Urbanism, in very much of our remapping of how you could reuse the existing curb cuts and between the existing curb and the property lines. And so, we rely very heavily on both ITE standards, as well as the SMART Code 9.2, as we revisit the, kind of the revisioning of traffic patterns on these streets.
Well, I applaud your efforts as well. I think the use of form-based code, we haven't done a lot of. I think it can be very useful for the city, and not just in downtown, but extending out into the neighborhoods as well. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Hans, you got off free. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Pat, do you need a motion that we-
We need a motion to approve the plan.
The plan, I would make such a motion.
A motion made in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your votes, and the plan is approved. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item P, and I understand we do not need an executive session, but we do need to approve the resolution that is part of-
PQ and R are all the same lawsuit, and it's an employment lawsuit, and it's to have council represent three different city employees all in the same suit.
But I don't think we can vote on them three at a time.
I think we cannot, you're correct.
Francis wouldn't let us do that. So, we're working on item P right now, the first one. Have motion made in second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Next is item Q, and it's the same thing, we do not need an executive session, but we do need to approve the resolution. Is there- Have motion made in second. Any further discussion? Cast your votes. The item is approved. Item R is another similar resolution. We do not need an executive session, but we do need a motion to approve the resolution. Have motion made in second to approve the item. Please cast your votes, and the item is approved. Thank you very much. Item S, I understand we do not need an executive session?
Do not.
This was, yeah, this was an item we were in executive session a couple of weeks ago. It's a property acquisition right-of-way issued down in Canadian County that Dan Brummett briefed us on.
But we do need to approve the resolution.
We do.
So, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Have motion made in second. Further discussion? Cast your votes, and the item is approved. Item T, we do not need an executive session, but we do need to strike the item there. Have motion made in second to strike the resolution? Any further comments or questions? And the issue is struck. Strik- striking? Item U, claims recommended for denial. Is there anybody here who wanted to discuss with the city council any item under the heading item AU, claims recommended for denial?
Mayor, I just want to note that U1A is actually in Ward 6. That's a typo. That's Ward 7.
I'm sure that John and Meg will be very happy to have that transferred me.
I'm just trying to make sure you point to John.
Have motion made in second. Is there any further discussion on items recommended for deny? And the items are approved. Item number nine is the claims recommended for approval. Is there anybody here who would like to speak anything under item nine? Have motion made? And second, to approve the claims recommended for approval. Is there any further discussion? Cast your votes. And it is approved. Item 10, items from council. John, do you have anything?
Thank you. What's going to change the face of northeast Oklahoma City will be the adventure line, which goes from Bricktown to northeast 50th, which will stop at northeast 4th, 7th, 10th, 16th, 23rd, and 36th and 50th. That's four of the lines that would change the face of northeast Oklahoma City. That's what will change for its economic development, for its commuter rail and streetcar.
Thank you. I was reminded that I went too fast. There was an item on the agenda, under items for council, Councilman White. This is an ordinance that she talked about, I think, at our workshop on the, meaning on every other week basis for the rest of the year. Is there any else you'd like to say on it, Councilman White?
The ordinance is pretty self-explanatory on its face. I thought for a long time that the second fiscal quarter, or the fourth quarter of the calendar year, was probably an easier time to do ever-other meetings than even the first quarter. From the standpoint that you have holiday cancellations, you have the National League of Cities during that period of time, and you have, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, sometimes the New Year's holiday is in that quarter. And I think we've done it, even with this summer, even with the agenda we have today, here we are at 12:30, which is a late agenda for us, but it's nothing like taking the whole day would be. So, and this would be something that we would adopt every year if it changes, I mean, if it doesn't work out. It still has the ever-other week that we could use for workshops or special meetings if they're necessary. I think it's worked well this summer, and so, with that, I would move that we approve the ordinance.
Have motion made in second. Is there further discussion? That way.
I'm gonna have to vote against it, because I think that not being here and doing the people's business on a regular basis is not a form of good government. I recognize the need for special occasions, like if there's a need for a quorum to go to National League of Cities. I think this year, for example, there's not gonna be a need to postpone that meeting. There is a need to postpone it around the holiday, so I'm respectfully gonna have to vote no.
And I think I'd like to say the same thing. I find that on summer schedule, you get out of your routine, and it's a little bit harder to, for me, I'm only gonna speak for myself personally, but I like the regularity of meeting here every Tuesday and available on a routine basis. So, Pete, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to vote no on it as well.
Well, I think it's a good idea. You know, we've been doing it during the summer, and I haven't seen any problems come from it, but that's kind of what I'm used to. I haven't been here very long, so. But I kind of view it as more efficient. It's gonna free up city staff to not have to prepare the, prepare our agenda every single week. It's gonna, I feel like it'll actually make the government run more efficient, rather than less. And just a political view is, the less a whole bunch of politicians get together and decide things, it's usually a good idea, so that's why I'm gonna vote for it.
You went one step too far, James.
I mean, I think Roger said that one time, about something along those lines.
But I have to be in favor of this proposition, because I introduced it once before and got voted down, so. Pete White is obviously more persuasive than I am.
I'll listen to you.
Anyway, we have a motion made in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your votes. And one, two, three, four, five, to three. The motion is approved. So, the city clerk, will you make the necessary announcements? Okay, thank you. Now, we can talk to items from council. Meg?
Yes, given the time, I'll try to be very brief. I want to just recognize and thank the Salvation Army for hosting a public meeting last Monday to help inform the neighborhoods surrounding 10th and Pennsylvania about their plans on the building. It was a little bit overdue in terms of timing, but they have done so, and I appreciate that very much. I want to congratulate Aztec Charter School. They had their first annual fundraising event on Thursday, and particular recognition to Governor Annata B., Mary Malone, Pete Delaney, and Becky Switzer, who were recognized as honorees at that event. And I'd like to welcome KOSU, who opened their recording studio down in Film Row last week. It was a huge success, great crowds, and it's fun to listen to that station now and realize they're being broadcast from awesome Ward 6.
David? Pete? Larry?
Yeah, real quick, I'd like to just congratulate Musquegee, Pennington, River Park, Windsor Forest, and Meridian Hills for a great neighborhood night out functions, as some of the other neighborhoods are still planning them in the next couple of weeks. And I'd also like to congratulate the Friends of 10th for a very successful auction, as they continue to raise money to promote a quality of life on Northwest 10th Street. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed? Just a thought, I mean, after approving this, is moving forward on the bus shelters in a couple of weeks. As part of this $120 million, 1% would go to public art, which is great. That's about $1.2 million for public art, nothing for our existing transit system. I just would, I would just plead with the council to consider that rather on the fund balance that we look to each ward about bus shelters, that maybe we just ask COPTA where throughout the city the most people are getting on and off bus stops. Find out how much the federal government, through the Formula Grant, is willing to pay. They're willing to pay for 80% of the shelters. We only have to come up with 20% and do those top priorities throughout the city. Figure out the advertising later, it can be figured out later, but help these people who've been waiting now for decades and decades. Thanks.
Counsel, I'm not opposed to approving bus shelters at all. I'm not sure that it's an 82 with the federal government, but we will pursue that and get, maximize whatever that is.
Okay.
I just have to talk to Rick about that, just in the last few minutes, and ask him about it, and he said that the 80/20 match is available, but it's not a bottomless well, obviously. If we tried to do it across the board where we did, where every councilman would say, even do what we're talking about, like each councilman would do three or four in their ward, the highest, three or four. He's not sure he could do all those in one year, 'cause he's not sure the match is available. But he was-
But he was in favor of the idea that, here he comes, he can say what he was in favor of.
Rick, I was talking about the conversation you and I had.
I heard part of it.
Not necessarily allocating a specific amount of money, but perhaps kind of a statement of intent on part of the council to do that.
Right, absolutely. You know, one of the challenges we have is we have limited funding that comes from the federal government. It has to be used for capital. And so from that standpoint, as I've stood before you before and said, we've got a big challenge coming up, and that's the replacement of buses. Computers and facility improvements that we make, those all come from that same pot of money. So it's a balancing act that we have. I certainly understand the priorities that council has set, excuse me, relative to putting in place better amenities for our riders. We certainly support that. And so trying to balance all of the capital demands that we have and yet work that into the plan is a challenge, but I enjoy that challenge.
So how much is available through the Formula Grant? And I understand you have different needs, but...
I'm probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about $300,000. I mean, that's what I've got right now, and I would look at probably doing that same kind of number and carrying it forward. But again, once I go through and count up the shelters, many of you have asked about shelters, and we've started giving you locations, I need to just add up the number and do the math on it and then see. The other thing that I will be showing you is we're starting to get to that point now of we, from a staff perspective, have identified a style that we think is attractive, gives us the ability to do a lot of those added benefits, maps, real-time information, that sort of thing. Like to show you those, and we can put a price tag to that so we can do the math. So we'll move forward in that, but, you know, giving me the flexibility, because again, it's a balancing act from year to year in terms of how much federal funding we get, as to how quickly we can move on this. But I think if we lay out the plan, whether I'm here or somebody else is here after me, we'll have a roadmap for what we need to do.
That's an excellent idea, I think.
Yeah, Counsel, I'm not against the bus shelter improvements at all. I think it's a really good idea, and I appreciate you bringing that forward. I just want to make sure that we're clear that there is some 80/20 money available. It's just not a...
One of the things I'd like to see it happen is if it could possibly come out where it's done citywide as opposed to worldwide. It seems to me, Pat and I talked about it the last time this discussion came up, that's really not our money, that's the city money. And I'm not comfortable unless there's no other option. I'm not comfortable in saying I want four in my, apparently at this point, there's no, I don't have another option. But I would rather have an option where we're going to do the 10 most needed every year or something like that, so it's scattered out where it's supposed to be as opposed to this. I'm convicted one way and somebody else may be convicted another way.
Well, I'm not convinced yet that the best solution is to give each councilman a million dollars to spend, how many they want.
I agree.
I feel real strongly that the best solution is to give the entire amount to Public Works with the general idea of what we think is important, and let them come up with the 10 or 12 or whatever number we can afford, most important projects, citywide, not in any specific ward, and spend the money that way. But that's just my feeling.
I agree with you, and I think this is a move towards what you're saying, identifying the biggest need. And Rick, just to clarify, you wouldn't, would you have any problem identifying the 30 or 35 highest boardings?
No, I think the thing we need to stay sensitive to, and this issue came up this morning when you mentioned Title VI, that is a federal requirement that I have to live by, and I want to be careful how we handle that so that we put those, we've established some standards by which we locate shelters. So until we get to the point where we can replace every bus stop out there with a shelter, I still need to be sensitive to that balance. And so that is an issue that I can't back off of.
And I think, Rick, your idea of presenting us with some kind of design that we can agree on and criticize is important, because I don't think we ought to wind up with, you know, a different design in each ward. I think we ought to have a standard city design that reflects the wishes of all this entire group here. Larry?
Question, Jim, just so I know where we stand. We did pass, or did we not pass, a resolution saying that each ward got a million dollars of the general fund right now?
We passed a budget amendment which allocated $8 million out of the fund balance for capital improvements. In the memo with that, I talked about how historically we have funded that at a million dollars a ward for street improvements.
So we don't, we have not passed yet then that, for example, Ward 3 has a million dollars for road resurfacing?
Again, historically, we've done that. What I've asked Public Works to do is prepare a list of projects and go to each ward. And I know, because Councilman Sheed has told me this, that he would like to use some of that money for bus shelters. And I thought what we were going to do is go back to the councilmen and get their, you know, get their own priorities and run the projects past them. What I'm hearing is from at least a couple of council people that that may not be the best approach.
I don't feel there is, because I think that we need bus shelters. I think it would be really a disservice to our citizens if one ward put in bus shelters and it wasn't citywide. And that's why my concern about the spending the money out of one particular area.
As well as potentially getting us into Title VI problems, if you put it in the wealthiest or most affluent areas.
Quick, I definitely am in support of bus shelters. In Ward 7, I have over 300 and something bus stops. We definitely need bus shelters. My recommendation also would be for us to look into having the Department of Corrections make our bus shelters, because it costs very little money when we contract with the Department of Corrections to build furniture. So that's something we can look into. Last week, I had the great opportunity to be with the director, the deputy director of Department of Corrections, and we took a tour of some facilities in Laughton. So I think there's something that we may look off into, because it may be cheaper for us as a city. Now, for as the million dollars, I kind of agree with some of the statements that have been made, but one thing for as Ward 7, I have streets that has never been touched since they were put in. So I'm hoping with some of that money, I can, of course, collaborate with Oklahoma County and work on improving some of those streets together with the city and county, working together. I think for us and Ward 7, I can't even speak for everybody else's ward, but I have a commitment from my county, well, I actually have all three county commissioners, but from Commissioner Johnson, for her and I to walk on some of those streets that's never been touched since they've been put in.
I think it seems like a much more efficient idea to take the 8 million and not split it up into 1 million chunks, because, you know, if you split it up into 1 million chunks, then say there's only 700,000 dollars worth of work that needs to be done in Ward 1, but there's, you know, 1,200 that need to be done in Ward 5, then, you know, you have a lot more flexibility. So to me, it just makes a lot more sense to keep it to 8 million and do, just as long as there's something being done in every ward, it doesn't have to be a million dollars, just as long as there's something to be done and Public Works gets with each one of us and says what our priorities are and what we kind of want to do, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not, that's fine, I have no problem with that. The fact of the matter is that the terrible streets that are out there, not all, but most of them, we're working on. They're in the bond issue or getting ECOG money and such. And of course, the good streets, we're not doing anything with. So there's this band of streets that are rated 40, 50, 60, somewhere in there, not 60, we're not doing 60 streets, but probably in that 35 to 50 range with the PCI rating that's in there. And you've all got them in all your wards. You've all got some that are in that band, and you've all got them with some heavy traffic. So it's an area that, you know, and then all of a sudden, some of you have some streets that are rated 25, just because since we did the bond issue or something else, the streets have just gone to heck. And it gives you an opportunity to fix some of those. Again, this is a policy issue, council, and we'd be happy, but I think it would be bad, like Pat said, as Public Works, to sit down with each of you and talk about what are the major streets in your wards, so we can at least start having that discussion and identify some of those.
Yeah, I think the overall idea is a good idea. It's just that being so rigid about the 1 million dollars, I think it's just unneeded, being so rigid about it.
Another concept would be, is it 8 million dollars the number we're going with, is to discount that by whatever percent, 10%, say, and use that 10% for the bus shelters, and however Ed can maximize those based upon the more universal criteria on bus shelters, and then take the rest of the money and go that step lower for street resurfacing, and 7 million everybody has, 910,000 dollars or something.
Again, it's more of a field thing for me. The thing I don't like about the million dollar allocation is it's just a little bit too porky for me. It's just, in practice, I don't think that works that way. I don't think it's ever been done that way. But it's just that perception, that it's a little bit too bringing home the bacon kind of thing, and I don't like that. I just perceptually, that's just not how I see myself.
And I understand what you're saying, but the fact of the matter is there are so many roads out there that need improvement, and we're not doing any pork-bell projects as we get out there, because every project that we do is needed.
Yeah, Jim, in practice, I agree with you. It's just, it's conceptually that I don't like it. I don't think we've paved any streets that didn't need to be paved. I know the ones that I've been, that have been done in my ward have been very, very needed. They're really bad shade locations where, you know, that's, I don't have a problem with that. It's, again, the concept that I'm troubled by.
And so, and I'm not trying to make this conversation go further, but how would you see a process of coming to a consensus on this? Should I bring back an item in a couple of weeks to discuss the use of the fund balance, put it on the agenda, have a discussion on it?
I think so.
It'd be good. Because there seems to be a difference of opinions, maybe not in the total concept, but in the details.
And again, I think we need to step back on this. This is a really good problem to have. We're blessed to have a budget situation last year where we had some excess revenues, where we've got 8 million dollars, and we're putting these in legitimate needs. We're putting in transit, which is a high priority for our citizens, and street improvements, which is the number one priority of our citizens, in addressing legitimate needs that are out there. And how we go about addressing those needs, identifying those needs, I don't have a problem with whatever process we come up with.
So we'll come back in a couple of weeks with some alternatives we can vote on?
Well, we'll discuss it. Well, we said discuss it. I'm not sure I've got alternatives, but we'll have a discussion.
Maybe just a few options, you know, like, I mean, because I've heard probably three options, yeah. Could we go ahead and have Rick identify that?
Sure.
How much money is available for, and then put that with a certain amount from the fund balance, and then identify the city's greatest needs and look at that on paper?
Sure.
One other option would be to make sure that a project is done in every ward. I mean, that's not quite the same as bringing B a million dollars to like a project. One option might be, you do what Ed's talking about, you take the, it's got to match with how much money Rick can get matched. There wouldn't be a sense of...
Now, that's, I think Rick's portion of this problem is the easiest.
Right.
The problem that we've got is that I'm an engineer, but everything doesn't, isn't empirically dated as you go forward. You're sitting there and you've got a road rating in one district that's rated at a 37, and one in your district is a 38. You know, that's really, they both need to be done, and you're splitting some hairs there.
Yeah, I've never thought, I don't misunderstand what I'm saying, I've never thought that roads got paved that didn't need to be paved and they weren't fair for that. It is, it's 99% perception.
Yeah, I understand.
No, it doesn't, in my ward, for instance, if they had brought me ones that didn't need to be paved, I'd have said no. But the fact is, there's 80 million dollars worth of roads in my ward that need to be paved. So it's easy, that's an easy deal. I mean, but it just, it's perception, I think.
Okay. Let me just make one comment. I don't see this as bringing home the bacon. I see it as meeting the needs of the people. They said their number one priority, citywide, was the quality of the roads. And to take money and allocate it across the board in areas where, like in Ward 3, where there's a definite need for that, to say that that's bringing home the bacon, I take exception to, I think it's meeting the needs of the people. And if a project is four section lines of road, then I'm good with that, however you get there. But my people need roads resurfaced, and they don't need buses, because most of my ward doesn't get buses.
My ward is just about like yours, except it's a little bit bigger, and I would differ, I would argue that that's just the opposite. Some of my people ride buses. Some of them do, some of them don't. We need roads too. I don't mean that nobody, I'm not talking about it that way. I'm talking about the perception of saying, we're dividing this up by wards, and you bring it to me and you say, are these okay? It's just perception. It's not, maybe it's my own perception of me that I don't like, I don't know, but I just, that's my concern about it. It doesn't have anything to, I don't think anybody's wasting money. I don't think there's ever been a dime spent on a road that didn't need to be spent under this process. It's just how we go about doing it, is that perception.
My ward needs urban chickens. How about that?
Get some.
Counsel, that's how I'm feeling.
Your ward has suburban chickens, right?
All right, items now from the city manager.
James.
Oh, by James, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just want to, I know it's lame, but I just want to highlight the sales tax collections. It was down in September, and it's two out of three months that the sales tax collections have been down a little bit. But we're comparing it to September of last year, and September of last year was up 15%. And so you take a look at that, it's, we were comparing to a very large number. Our economist, Russell Evans, when we talked about our financial workshop, he talked about being slow a little bit the first two quarters of this fiscal year and more robust growth the next two quarters. We hope to see that, but this is a little concerning, not greatly concerning, but a little bit concerning. So we're watching it very, very closely, and we'll look forward to the October check to see how the trends go forward. That's all, sir.
Are there any questions or comments? We have some citizens who want to be heard. John Bilbury. Congratulations, John, for being first. You stayed here a long time. I appreciate that.
I picked the right day, didn't I?
You're going to get everybody's attention right now.
My name is John Bilbury. I live at 2037 Northeast 16th Terrace, and I have a real concern. Last Tuesday, I was on my way to dance class on Broadway, and I do mid-south swing. So as I got out of my vehicle, all of a sudden, a police car pulls in front of me. The police officer jumps out. He says, "I saw you put a gun in your pocket." And I said, "I have no gun." And I had my dance shoes in one hand and my keys in the other hand, my automobile keys in the other hand. He says, "Drop what you have." I dropped what I had, put my arms out. He says, "Turn around." I said, "Sir, I have no gun in my pocket. I have no gun at all." He pushes me up against my vehicle, and he says, "Okay." Then he starts searching me. And I said, "Sir, I have no gun." Then he goes around to my vehicle, and he says, "Come over here where I can watch you," because he didn't find anything on me. And he goes over to my vehicle and starts searching my vehicle. He searched my vehicle with his hand on his gun. And I'm standing there, and I'm looking up at all the people that I was going to dance class with. They're all standing outside, including the ladies from the yoga place next door, and the guy from, and the guy that was a hairstylist, and him and his customer, they were all standing outside looking to see what the commotion was. So I complied with the officer. I did what I was supposed to do. I'm a retired colonel from the United States Army. Stop and frisk is something that should not happen in Oklahoma City. He didn't have a reason to stop me, other than I think I was a person of color. And I'm making that accusation because I went down and filed a complaint. He embarrassed me in front of my friends. This is on Broadway. This is Automobile Alley, okay? Automobile Alley. This shouldn't have happened. I fought for this country. I went to Iraq. I don't have time to come back and be accosted by some officer who's trying to make some, I don't know what kind of point he was trying to make. I go back, I pick up my keys and my shoes, and I think about it. I walk over to the officer who's had gotten in his car. He says, "Sorry about that." I said, "Officer, did you not think that this is a gun-carrying state already also? And that, did you ask for my permit? If I had a permit?" He said, "I didn't have to." And I said, "Officer, I need your name." And in a condescending manner, he says, "M..." And in a condescending manner, he says, McCorse, McMorsen, badge numbered 1253. And I said, okay, McMorsen. And he said, you're not getting it, so he writes, he said, I'll write it down for you. So he wrote it down for me, handed it to me, and I said, Officer McMors, he said, it's Sergeant McMorsen. I said, yes, sir. I went on inside. This is humiliating. It's humiliating for me to stand right here and go through this. I want you to know about that. We're not trying to create a sundown town out of Oklahoma City. And for those of you who've been around, you know what a sundown town is. People of color cannot walk the streets at night in Oklahoma City or an automobile alley. This is ridiculous. I want you to know this. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Bilbury, first of all, I'm sorry that this incident happened to you. We will investigate it. Chief Berry is here, and he'd like to get with you and get some more specific information about it. So I apologize to you that this had happened, and we will, I promise you, we will look into this.
If I may comment, I want to thank Mr. Bilbury for taking the steps into filing a complaint. I'm young, and I'm also African-American. I know what it's like to be in a similar situation as Mr. Bilbury. I represent a very diverse ward, and majority of the times when you see me out in public, you will see me with my ID on me, my city council ID. It's sad that in 2013 that we have things like this going on, but I want to thank Mr. Bilbury for stepping up and filing a complaint against that officer. Thank you.
Mr. Bilbury, if you'll get with Chief Berry, he's a former police chief, and he's now assistant city manager in charge of the public safety department.
Thank you.
He'll be able to handle your problem. Okay, next we have Joe Sergeant Nelson.
It's been an exciting day. I came here with about two or three sheets of paper to talk about, and I was going to address my remarks to five of you.
Mr. Nelson, I'd appreciate it if you could keep your remarks short, the hour is late.
Okay. I'll keep it short. On August the 27th, our city councillor, Mr. Jordan, was good enough, didn't entertain us in the laws of privacy, so to speak, and Ward Two was reciting the laws in reference to the MAPS projects. And unless I'm mistaken, which I don't think I am, but in the event that I am, I do have the disc here that was printed up there to support my remarks. I was enlightened to know that it was the way the MAPS project was packaged and put together in part and did violate in certain areas by the Supreme Court, that two items did not or should not have been packaged with it. Do I stand corrected, Credit Coast?
Which one are you talking about?
Last Tuesday, I mean, the 27th, when Mr. Shadiv, Ward Two, was talking in reference to the MAPS projects, the various ones on MAPS Three, and it was two that you made reference to that did not belong technically on that program, so to speak. And it had to do with the parks was one, and I do believe Wellness Centers or something was the other one. Anyway, or somewhere, I may have missed, but I did have them on there, so I just wrote them down.
No, not the way it was done.
Okay.
The way the MAPS, it's a city capital improvement sales tax. That is the tax. That is what the voters voted on. It was a tax for city capital improvements. None of the projects are in that ordinance. That was a resolution of intent stating the council's plan and intent for spending that money if the tax passed. The voters did not vote on that.
Well, I was kind of under the impression, I've been listening to the MAPS projects ever since day one. I know how fast Newark put it together. It kind of pushed everybody right on to on the ballpark. But the only thing is, a lot of this stuff, I think I kind of resonated the fact that during the process of his legal visitation with you, and it came out that way, and I got it on the tape, and I reread it and reread it and reread it, and I thought, well, hmm, something's not right. And then you came out in the Gazette, and it seemed like it was just a flip-flop of everything that was said on the tape, other than the fact that Ms. Satter got upset, because she said, everybody up here, if they voted incorrectly, and it was technically illegal on the vote, and common sense, nobody's calling you a crook, and nobody called anybody a crook. It just was, the issue was, did we vote incorrectly or did we not? And if we did, that is violation of the law. And if you voted and it's violation of the law then, it would be a violation of the law now. All I got to do is, did you and are you guilty of any of a long-dated line?
No.
You don't think so? Would you, if I come back next time we see this, would you give me the answer after looking it up closely? I did. The council, per se, is wrong. And I'll visit with you about it after you leave here. I know you all are busy, want to go home, you've had a tiring day. It has been rough on everybody. And in reference to one other item, I did speak to the mayor himself two years ago in his office out on Northwest Highway, and I told him, I says, why in the world are you selling the public something we do not need? And he said, what are you talking about? I said, you're talking about the senior aquatic centers. Why? We have 99 of them in Oklahoma City right now. One of them's right over here in your backyard. It's called the Presbyterian Rehab Center, one of the finest in Oklahoma City, and they have the same problem the other 99 have, clientele, and doctors use that one, and their patients use that one. And then all of a sudden, it gets turned around from the senior aquatic centers, it's now the wellness centers. Now, one of your councilmen spoke up, and I tell you, it drew a lot of favoritism, and he was dead on. If I might, without stepping on anybody's toes, refer to Mr. Pete White, Ward Four, when he made the statement, or to you all, that why build on land when there's a lot of empty buildings all over Oklahoma City that would accommodate the same situation if we have to have it? And since the people have voted on it technically, as he put it, then we're probably going to wind up with it. But why spend all those millions of dollars for something that we've got billions that might suffice and do the rehab on them? Do you agree with my statements? Anybody got any things to say about that? At least we would save some money. Does that make sense to you, Mr. White?
It's interesting you can comment, Mr. Nelson, it really is.
Okay. Well, I stand adjourned then, so to speak. I hope you do too.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Roy Stafford, I think Mr. Stafford went home earlier. Is there anybody else here who would like to address the commission on any matter? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.